Welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Planning Board. It is Tuesday, January 8th, 2013, approximately 7:40 PM. Be advised that this meeting is being video and audio taped. The first item of business is actually at 7:45, which is about two minutes from now, two, three minutes from now. And we're going to continue the public hearing for Gums Farm Recreation Area Special Permit. So Cindy, if you'll just give us a couple of minutes, we'll proceed with that shortly.
We didn't have anything going through here?
No.
Wow. We were originally going to have connection.
Yeah.
That was true.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the turtles got in the way?
Yeah, yeah. The turtles got in the way.
Okay. 7:45 it is. So we're going to continue the public hearing for Gums Farm Recreation Area. Tom, I know that you've submitted something to the board regarding drainage and the other issues related to the use of curb stops in lieu of curbing, and the question of whether an earth removal permit is required. And I have received through Betsy something from Bob Bullock. I drafted a letter to him a week or so ago. So he is in agreement that those are not issues for us to be concerned about as far as the special permit. So we're in good shape there. So I guess with that, Tom?
Yeah, I think we're in good shape with the drainage, too. The drainage report that was submitted early in December was just kind of a summary. There were no actual calculations attached. What I was hoping is that prior to this meeting, we'd be getting the full drainage report, and there would also be a supplemental analysis to zero in on exactly how high the ponded water surface comes in that depression there relative to the surface elevation of Rockwood Road. The engineer, Mr. Crowell, did drop by our offices on Friday, and he delivered the complete drainage report. It's got all the calculations. It looks fine. He, however, there was, I think, maybe a communication issue or something. He didn't do any additional analysis. He didn't focus in on what happens relative to that depressed area and the elevation of Rockwood Road. What his analysis does show, however, is that for the 10-year event, the water in that depression is actually lower than it is now. For the 100-year event, it's exactly the same. And the reason for that is they enlarged that area quite a bit. That's shown on the site plan. The other thing we said in our memo, this area is kind of borderline between an A and a B soil. The NRCS atlas shows it actually as an A soil. And the engineer, to be conservative, modeled it as a B soil, which is less permeable. There's nothing wrong with what he did. In fact, it's good to be conservative. But with his analysis, he's saying under the 10-year event, it's fine. We know it doesn't get up on Rockwood Road during the 10-year event. So the only remaining question is the 100-year event. And I guess is the question of, with all the flooded areas that would occur under a 100-year event, is it significant that there would be ponding extending out onto the road from this facility? We remodeled his analysis using an A soil. And the truth is probably somewhere between an A and a B soil. With an A soil, you get hardly any water in that area at all. So I think his analysis is conservative. It's fine. It's, the ponded water surface under the 100-year event, not in how much we have to worry about the 100-year event, comes up to 20276. The surface elevation of Rockwood Road, it's cut off on their plan, but it's around 203. So it looks like even under the conservative analysis for the 100-year event, if it comes up onto Rockwood Road, it's maybe a few inches. An alternative analysis for an A soil, it wouldn't come up there at all. So we didn't get that additional component of the analysis, but we did get the core report. The core report's fine. And I would surmise that if there's any flooding under the 100-year event, it's going to be a few inches. They're not going to close the road or anything like that. So my recommendation would be to accept the analysis at this point unless the board wants to go through another iteration of that.
Okay. Any questions?
No. Fine.
And on the other questions that Bob Bullock responded to, I think everyone was copied in on that, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah.
By email. And I think they have it.
Yeah.
They're like hard copy.
I have it right here. It's essentially the same use as Kid's Place. And he believes it would fall under the educational exemption of chapter 40A, section 3. So I think we're in good shape. I mean, those are the only things that I recall from our last meeting, so unless there's any...
And he also was fine with the unpaved using concrete stops.
Yeah.
You already mentioned that.
Yeah.
Well, he didn't actually say anything about the concrete stops.
They were in my letter to him. They were both in my letter to him, the concrete stops as well as earth removal.
Well, I saw them.
He also said, since neither Pine Street or Kid's Place is paved, I'd be unreasonable to require a pavement. And then this is, the concrete stops just kind of fell off of that.
Yeah, it sort of, yeah, they sort of fell out.
Yeah, but it's...
Yeah, but he's aware of it.
Oh, okay.
I actually bumped into him this weekend. He was actually on vacation, so that's why we didn't get this, I guess, till today.
So you're sure that he meant to, that it was okay not to...
Yeah.
He has it in his letter, Steve.
Nothing about the stops.
Yeah, not the stops.
Yeah, well, I'd like to see if we could try to get a follow-up email from him that mentions the stops, just so that we can put it in with the file.
That's fine.
That was our question, was whether or not we can go without having edging and have stops. And the stops weren't mentioned in the email, so if we could just have a follow-up from him.
You personally okay with using concrete, using the concrete curb stops?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. If it's not paved, I don't see any reason why you should have curbing around the border.
Well, actually, the stops have an advantage. They serve to delineate the parking space.
Right.
Right.
So back to the drainage, the catch basin hood, which has been recommended a couple of times now, does that play into that situation at all? Is it kind of separate?
It will be, no, it will be installed. Kyle called me today and kind of went over the report. And he said that he spoke to Bob McGee, and Bob McGee is fine with installing the hood. And Kyle is fine with it. I looked up the price there, like $300 to $500, depending on the details.
Is it something we should reference in the decision, or you're pretty...
We, yeah, we referenced it in our report, but I do think that's a reasonable recommendation.
What's the identification of that catch basin? How would you describe it in terms of location?
Adjacent to the quote-unquote possible wet area. And what we were recommending is a snout, S-N-O-U-T, oil and debris hood.
It's the last sentence of his report.
Okay.
It's got all the detail you need.
Okay. That being the case, I mean, do I have a motion at this point regarding the special permit?
I'd gladly make a motion to approve. What are we calling it? I'll make a motion to close the hearing. Thank you, Ms. Clerk.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit for the Gums Farm Parking and Play Area Municipal Recreation Facility, unpaved parking, F7Q special permit.
Second.
With that, installation.
Excuse me. Andrea, subject to the authorization by the DPW, we were to include the catch basin on Rockwood Road adjacent to the possible wet area to be retrofitted with a hood such as the snout, oil, and debris hood or equal. I amend my motion.
Who seconded that?
I amend my second.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, motions are made. Seconded, or need further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Cindy's free.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Planning Board.
Good luck.
Very welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I may be back in the future.
That's good. We like to have an audience here.
So we've got five minutes here.
Okay. Okay, so next item of business deals with the car wash, which is under construction adjacent to Fort Kicks. And I guess, you know, Betsy, are you under the impression that anyone is going to be here or something? Okay. So we can wait? We're a little bit early, five minutes early, maybe?
And the Fern Ridge Estates A&R Plan, oh, that's to move lot lines? Is that what that is?
Yes, and all of, Gino had sent some comments, and all of those have been corrected, so...
Hey, Michael.
Welcome. How are you? Good. How are you?
Yeah, so that Fern Ridge plan is, I think, all set to be endorsed.
What existing... Oh, Gino has comments that there are things that should be added to the plan. Oh, this is the corrected one? Oh, because his is dated January 7th.
And then he forwarded the plans to Gino, and he said that all of his...
Oh, okay.
...has been addressed. We were quick.
Well, if you would like, I'll make a motion that we endorse the plan for the A&R on Spencer Lane. On the plan dated, what's the, December 15th, 2012.
Oh, as revised? It must have been revised?
Yeah. Yeah, Gino sent something out today.
And revised January 8th.
And revised January 8th.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
I know not the first line. Can we sign while we're waiting?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we've got a couple more minutes.
We can also approve the minutes.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yep, there you go. I think Michelle has to make that motion.
Michelle did a great job.
Are you going to make the motion to accept them?
Oh, yeah, this October 2nd, December 6th.
You need to accept the meeting minutes of October 2nd and December 6th, 2012.
Seconding that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, thank you.
And Betsy, you guys do a nice, very succinct...
We may have an early night tonight.
We're shooting for that.
Yeah.
We're shooting.
We're trying to rush it through here.
I'm keeping my mouth shut.
You can't even keep up with the papers.
Can we... So Tuesdays aren't a good night for Greg Merlitz.
His class, right?
Class, from now on. Rest of the semester. That's the full semester. Just when you had us. You had us.
A long time no see.
How are you?
Very good. And yourself?
Very well, thank you.
Welcome. How are you? Doing well? Your new year off to a good start?
I hope so.
Okay. It's eight o'clock. Next item of business is a meeting with Bob Roy of Joffran to discuss cottage car wash egress, some concerns that have been raised. So, Tom, you've had a meeting actually at the site of the car wash, which is under construction.
Yes, it's mentioned in Mr. Roy's letter. Chief Stone was there, but I also attended, the developer of the cow wash attended, and his engineer.
Okay, so perhaps you can talk about that conversation, just update the planning board on comments, concerns, ideas?
Sure. I'm sure Mr. Roy will have some additional comments, but the meeting was prompted by concerns raised by Joe Fran about whether the current site plan, which essentially implements a segment of the frontage road parallel to Pine Street, and the car wash would have its entrance and exit not directly on Pine Street, but it would share the end segment of the Joe Fran driveway. Provisions for that were contained in the site plan approvals for both projects. Mr. Roy had some concerns about site distance. I think probably those concerns, to some extent, apply to existing operations, but I think he has an enhanced level of concern when the car wash goes in there. I did print out, and I just did a couple of copies, but I gave a copy to the chair. These were photographs of the site that I took, and they were emailed to all the board members on that day. But the site distance situation there is a little bit complex. The site distance as you exit from the cow wash, looking left and right on the Joe Fran driveway itself is fine. The car, when it gets out to the end of the Joe Fran driveway, there's adequate site distance looking left and right. I think Chief Stone's concerns, and I believe Mr. Roy's concerns are, and it shows sort of in this picture here, an absolutely ideal condition would be if you were sitting in the car wash driveway, if you could also see the entirety of Pine Street. And what prevents you from doing that right now is this little clump of evergreen trees that are here, kind of coupled with that sign there. So, you know, Chief Stone's recommendations kind of take things to a higher level. He's looking at something that's really ideal, which is to see the whole area. I don't know that you'd, you know, automatically know what the cars are going to do, the cars coming down Pine Street, whether they're going to turn or not. But it certainly would be optimal from a safety point of view if you could see that entire area. One recommendation I could make, although it does impact Mr. Roy's property, but I think it would alleviate his concerns about site distance even for his own vehicles, might be to remove those two small pine trees that sort of block the view there. And I think that would certainly help the overall area.
Well, would you have to remove them, or could you just...
You could limb them up.
Bin them?
You could limb them up. That becomes a question of aesthetics, whether you like a pine tree looking like that, but that certainly would be...
Well, they all look like that eventually.
Yeah, that would be an alternative. The other option, and the applicant was willing to explore it, would be to put the entrance of the site wash, of the car wash, directly opposite Valley Street there. But I think if you look at maybe this photograph here, you know, this really seems like it would be a complex situation to have the entrance to the cow wash right opposite Valley Street. You'd be creating sort of a four-way intersection.
So it's where the car is turning right, the white car there?
Yes. It would be opposite that.
What happens to the queuing lane?
Well, that would be significantly decreased.
They'd be out on Pine Street.
A very significant issue, yes. You know, I certainly respect Mr. Roy's concerns as a businessman, and he certainly knows the operations of his own facility. But, you know, if I have to make a recommendation from an engineering point of view, it would be to maintain the two site plans as they have been approved, and have the single entrance for both facilities. Also, I think I would recommend that something be done to improve the site distance relative to those two evergreen trees that are there. So, you know, I think we all received the letter from Chief Stone. Again, I think I've expressed what his concerns were. And I think I've sort of summarized the discussions out there. Mr. Roy, I'm sure has additional comments.
One of the things that I noticed after our last conversation regarding this concern is that Chief Stone referred to those trees as having been planted. And I think in one of the conversations you and I had, you thought that perhaps they just grew, that they weren't necessarily planted.
That would be my thought, because if you look at the landscaping in the front of Joe Fran overall, they're all deciduous trees. I think these are the only evergreen trees, at least trees, there are shrubs, but I think these are the only evergreen trees on the front of the property. So I'm presuming they may have just existed there, and the landscaping was done around them.
Okay. And they don't show up on any approved plan or anything of that nature?
A site this large didn't have a landscaping plan for a site like this?
Oh, it did. I didn't look back to see if those trees were on it.
It's not uncommon for us to say, use, preserve what you have.
Yeah, yeah. And at the time...
They do look a little larger than they would be if they were planted.
It wasn't an issue at the time.
No.
They were probably much smaller. So I guess, you know, we have some folks here this evening. Would you like to make any comments about...
I certainly would.
So if you would, please just introduce yourself and...
I'm Bob Roy.
Okay.
I'm the managing partner of the Roy Norfolk LLC. In deference to what Mr. Houston had said, I think he's, I think you people are missing the entire point. We have 50, on average, 18-wheelers weighing as between 35,000 pounds and 40,000 pounds entering that property each day. The easement is set 20 feet from Pine Street. There is no opportunity to stop those big trailers if somebody pulls out in front of them. That's what this whole thing is about. It's not about anything else. It's about the safety. How you ever let the road be put at 20 feet from that road, which has a whole lot of traffic moving very quickly? Those trailers can't stop that quickly. And somebody is going to pull out in front of them.
So let me make sure I understand the concern, because we have a facility like Fort Kicks, for example, where there's a great deal of...
I sold Rowland to Fort Kicks.
Okay, please let me finish.
I'm certainly aware of it.
Let's have a civil dialogue, okay? So there's extensive traffic, you know, in and out of that facility. So I'm not challenging what you're saying, but help us understand, put it in perspective, because we have some other businesses on that road, and we haven't, to my knowledge, had issues in terms of traffic accidents.
But there isn't any other business there that is in the movement that my company is in. We're importers. We have 50 containers a day come in and out through that property. Those are huge trucks. They have nothing to do with what the Colonial Fence people are doing or Fort Kicks is doing. Those trailers come in from both Route 1 and A1. And from A1... And from A1, they couldn't conceivably see a car pulling out. From, coming in from One, they make the turn. If somebody comes out of that driveway, there's no chance that they could stop.
And when you say somebody coming out of the driveway, you're talking about somebody entering the?
Coming out of the car wash, I'm sorry.
Okay, and entering the, okay. So that's your concern. I mean, we have site distance issues getting onto Pond Street. It's Pine Street, actually, correct, Pine Street. So we have those site distance issues. But separate from that, your concern is that cars are pulling out of the car wash and basically into the easement, twenty feet off of Pine Street.
Twenty feet from Pine Street is where that easement is. Twenty feet is from me to that wall. How can an eighteen-wheeler with all that weight behind it ever apply the brakes?
I don't want to sound stupid, Mr. Roy, but if he's coming from, if he's coming from Foxborough, then he's gonna stop before he turns, right?
He may.
When would he, when would, is it possible the truck wouldn't be stopping before he made the turn?
Sure, if there is no traffic coming in the lane heading towards Foxborough.
One fifteen south.
Right, he wouldn't stop, he'll just make that turn.
This being Boston, we can't assume he'd use his turn signals.
So your concern is a truck coming from Route One would just make the turn and may not see a car that's pulling out of the car wash into the driveway, into the easement, is that?
And he would be right in front of the truck at that point.
Now, your concern, is it compounded by the site distance issues? I mean, if those things are addressed, which is, you know, what I thought we'd be focusing on this evening. I mean, I would think that that would ameliorate some of the concerns in terms of whether or not it eliminates the concerns, that's another question.
Tom raised a good point about that.
My concerns are not on sightlines. My concerns are that these trucks have been coming there since the year 2000. To suddenly introduce the fact that somebody is coming out of this easement in front of where the trucks turn is not a very good idea.
Well, I think that part of what you're saying is that the truck driver would not be able to see if there was a car coming out, is that right?
For sure he wouldn't.
So the dangerous side is the side coming from Foxborough, is that correct? Not the side coming from One A, because they'd have to slow way down to take that turn in, correct? If you're coming past Four Kicks, you'd have to.
Honest to goodness, I've never driven an eighteen-wheeler. I'm the wrong one to answer that.
But I'm, just judging from having to take the turn, I'm assuming.
It's a tighter turn.
That, with a tight turn like that, that they'd have to slow down a lot. And part of the problem, if they can't see them coming out of the driveway, then the issue comes back to that sightline issue. Because anyone driving down that street, if that, if this tree had some of the lower branches taken off, that pine tree that's out in the front, that would expose the entire driveway. And anyone that's there would be fully visible to someone that's in a truck. Just looking at the picture.
Think of this differently. How about the person coming out of the car wash? He's got a nice shiny car now. He isn't used to pulling in front of eighteen-wheelers. That's a different way to look at the same problem.
I just think it all comes down to the sightline. Not only does it come down to the sightline, but it also has to do with timing. There, we had a traffic study that showed when this car wash would be heavily used. And we know it's not during the period of time that your business would be having deliveries. So, you know, the businesses aren't operating at the same times. Granted, there will be some cars coming and going.
Which is a way of saying that their heavy traffic will be on the weekend.
Right, or maybe nighttime, when your business is no longer operating. Most people come home from work, and then they go out and have their car washed.
You may be operating, but you're getting deliveries.
Yes, there is still some movement of trailers, because they come in and pick up trailers, but at night, but.
I mean, that whole issue of whether or not the two would be operating simultaneously, that was looked at during multiple hearings.
I think the way I would think about it is if the site distance could be improved and the driver approaching the Joe Fran driveway from Route One could see both the end of the Joe Fran driveway and the easement from the car wash. If that truck driver is gonna operate safely, if he sees a vehicle in that position, he or she should anticipate that that vehicle might make a move. Just as when the truck driver approaches the Joe Fran driveway in the same direction, he or she has to be aware that there may be oncoming traffic on Pine Street, which is a conflict. So I think if you could improve the site distance, what you have is not two intersections, but you really have one sort of extended intersection within which movements may occur. And if the truck driver can see the whole picture, and there are potentially conflicting vehicles, the proper way to operate that truck is to slow down, because the truck driver would know that he has to stop. I mean, it's kind of like an urban situation, where you have like five legs to an intersection, multiple conflicting moves. If the driver can see the whole picture, they should anticipate what vehicles may do in that sort of extended intersection.
Tom, just seeing existing conditions from whenever these pictures were taken. If you're pulling up One Fifteen North to take a left into Joe Fran, this is already wide enough for you to see the entire picture from the cab itself.
It is, one of the pictures, I think it's the.
But that mouth, what I'm saying, is plenty big. If you're coming in here, and I think like Andrea said earlier, if you're coming in here and you're basically, you're making that quick turn in without stopping, guess what, that's always gonna be a hazard. Well, conditions change, and the reality is, I live off of One Fifteen at the opposite end. And because now no one that, no one lived there for many years with little kids, but the house on the corner now has four little girls who play basketball. Guess what I have to do now before pulling straight in? I have to stop to make sure they're not playing basketball anymore. And then I take the left off of One Fifteen. Conditions change, I'm not gonna wipe out four little kids playing basketball. I don't see where, you know, just because you happen to have to stop on One Fifteen, maybe wait to let a car by, or wait to see a car come out, that's life. This guy's got an approved site plan. And we're addressing a separate queuing issue at a different site in town later on tonight. I think this is being overblown, to be honest with you. It's not news to anyone on either site plan that this frontage road, of which I am clearly not a friend to, is a new idea. It's been forced in place for years, even before I was on the planning board.
I wondered, to Mr. Roy's point, if some signage for the drivers exiting the car wash might help.
A stop sign there?
Not just a stop sign, but a stop sign with also a sign saying caution, you know, truck crossing. Or trucks entering, or trucks entering and exiting. Maybe even go so far as a flashing, flashing red stop light. Or maybe out on One Fifteen, a flashing yellow light, or something, I don't know, to provide some more signage. I understand signage is only as good as the people that are going to pay attention to it, so it's not a full-blown effort. But I also, you know, earlier on, I found Jeff's point interesting about Four Kicks. And I understand it's not in the same path of traffic. But if trucks are coming from One A and they're turning onto One Fifteen, that's a very tight conflict there. And you got a lot of drivers, I know because I take my kids to Four Kicks, who are turning around, they're dealing with the crying kid in the backseat, they're not paying attention, they're fiddling with the movie on the, you know, screen in the TV. They're coming to that stop sign, and if, there's, I think, a big potential conflict there too. So I know it's not the same, but I do think it merits some pause to look at that and say, has there been problems, has there been conflict? And I would think, much like the car wash, the prime time of Four Kicks would be similar to what the car wash would be. You know, it's gonna be evenings, it's gonna be weekends. So I do think it's an interesting model to consider, has that kind of caused problems? It's not the same exact animal, but it could.
On the other hand, you guys granted Four Kicks access straight out onto One Fifteen. Have you all read Chief Stone's letter?
Yes, we do have it.
I do think, you know, the trees, to me, they don't offer a whole lot in terms of aesthetics. You know, they're obviously not pruned. I mean, rather even than just trimming them, if that helps the visual clearance, I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, if they wanted to just be taken down. I think that that would be a fine proposal as well. They're really kind of scrubby-looking, if you ask me.
Well, you know, that's clearly something that's within Joe Fran's discretion. The trees are on their property. The planning board can't compel them to do anything with the trees. But I take very seriously Mr. Roy's concerns about site distance. And I'm just advising that that's one obvious step that could be taken, is if the site distance related to those trees could be improved. It improves the safety on the Joe Fran driveway, never mind the, any cars emerging from the car wash.
I mean, Chief Stone's letter, it focuses primarily on the site distance concerns.
He also speaks of how close the easement is to the road. And he says, "My recommendation is to give the village car wash direct access to Route One Fifteen corridor, as you've given every other developer in that area, et cetera, et cetera."
Well, he has an awful lot of comments in his letter that shouldn't even be in there. There's just all sorts of comments in here.
Steve, he's the chief safety officer of the town.
Yeah, but he's got comments in here that have nothing to do with safety.
And he sends you guys a letter that said, "This essentially is not safe."
Okay.
He didn't say that when we were having the hearings, never mentioned it.
But maybe like some of you people, he didn't understand the business we're in. Nobody's there counting how many trailers come in each day. And many of you have no idea what we do, which is perfectly fine, since we're not in business for the public.
Well, just, you know, Mr. Roy, a couple of things. You know, this process started a long time ago, as you know. And this significant concern, what, you know, you believe will still be a significant concern, at least my sense is, you believe it's still a significant concern, even if the site distance was improved, site distances in both directions. So we're at a point now where it's extremely difficult for us to make the type of change that I think you're looking for us to make. Now, I'll speak for myself. If I felt that it was absolutely essential that the change we made, we would find a way to make it. And I'm not sure what that would mean, but we would find a way to give direct access. But I'm not sure we wouldn't trade some issues that are detailed in Chief Stone's letter with some other issues, which may even be more significant. We've talked about them in terms of the proximity to Valley Street. So, you know, there's no simple solution to this. But I think the members of the board are absolutely interested in trying to improve the situation as much as possible. You know, dealing with site distances and signage and those types of things. So, you know, you absolutely have our support to improve the situation. But I think what I'm hearing here from the members of the board is that our intention is to move forward pretty much as planned. Because we do have a process, and this process started a long time ago.
And if the process isn't correct, you're going to continue on. Even though this is, is, did any of you realize that that easement was twenty feet?
It was twenty feet intentionally.
From the, from the street?
Yeah. It is twenty feet intentionally, it's a frontage road. That was intentional. You know, I think, I think that signage identifying to the car wash people that trucks are entering and exiting is a valuable thing to, you know, keep their eye open. I think it's also, I think it's also possible that their, the truck drivers deal with worse traffic problems than this in their, in delivery to, you know, other locations.
And it's not something that wasn't considered. Like I said, it was brought up several times when we had the open hearings.
You all know I'm not bashful. You made me spend fifty-seven thousand dollars planting those trees. Now they're gonna get too tall, they're gonna create all kinds of problems. But I would tell you that once, God forbid, there is an accident there. If there is, we're gonna bring suit against this town, because your chief safety officer said it wasn't safe. That's ridiculous, guys and ladies.
You have the option of relocating your driveway. You could move it up past your pump of trees, and you can maintain your trees. It's a condition on your site plan approval.
They, do you know how much I had to spend extra to build that driveway? Like a secondary road?
I have no idea, but the condition on this site plan approval was a frontage road, Mr. Roy. With all due respect, it's a condition that your engineer clearly understood. And I don't think you probably thought the day would come where it would have to be exercised.
And we still cannot believe that you chose to do that.
I mean, it's a legal document.
It certainly would be better for the car wash, their business, to have direct access.
Absolutely not, I totally disagree with that, just from a queuing standpoint.
I hope that they have a queuing situation there for their sake, but anyway.
Listen, Mr. Roy, I mean, we've listened, I will agree that it's not ideal. But I'm not sure there's an ideal solution to this, okay? So how can we work together so that we can improve the situation? How can we do that? I'd like to have that discussion, and I think the members of the board would.
I am not sure what we're going to do. We're not going to cut trees down, because we didn't like being told that we had to plant them. And there certainly is a tree involved that we planted. You weren't part of this board when, when we went through all of what was necessary to build this building.
It's a nice piece of property, by the way. I mean, it's a nice building, I mean, I mean, I mean that sincerely.
Yeah, I, 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 I have been floored by the number of residents of the town that come in to us and tell us how nicely we keep that property. Of course, I don't wanna keep going back to nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand. That, that took years off my life, but I give up.
Can we meet at the property and identify some things that we can do, and we'll have to see how to manage the costs?
Of course you can.
Can, can we do that? Can we agree to do that?
What, one of the interesting things, i- it, it's almost a joke. But are you guys going to tell the car wash what share of the plowing they need to pay? I'm just curious.
That's another reason why we should meet, to discuss those, those, those things. I mean, are there?
At your convenience.
Okay, um, I'm available, uh, later this week, next week, I mean, Friday. I could probably meet at your facility on Friday.
Just tell me what time. I, I'm, I'm busy between, I have a lunch date, I know that.
Okay.
In the morning would be fine.
We have your contact information, Betsy, Betsy, you have it.
I certainly hope so. Betsy has my email.
Jeff, if you want me there, I'm busy from about eleven to four on Friday. Free on Thursday, free any day next week.
Maybe Friday morning?
Jeff, just in case, uh, the other party is here, I don't know if he wants to speak or not, but I'd like to hear from him if he wants to.
Michael Braebeant, Koch Car Wash, thirty-six Pine Street. I do meet with Mr. Houston and Mr. Joe Fran a lot, Chief Stone as well. Obviously, my, my expression to Mr. Houston was, we would like to do what's best for the town and the population of the town. We have a site plan, we set the building up this way for queuing particularly. If this access is changed, uh, we have a tremendous amount of work we have to do to actually flip the building to be able to meet the same type of requirements that we tried to provide to the town. My only point is that, uh, you know, the frontage road, we had no option with this, this was what we had to abide by. And my concern is, in my access to the frontage road, we not only have a tree that was planted by Mr. Joe Fran, we also have a light pole that needs to be removed.
Mr. Roy, by the way.
I'm sorry. Forgive me, Mr. Roy. And, um, I guess that's all.
So in terms of, uh, signage, it was one of the suggestions that Michelle had made earlier, a good suggestion in terms of signage, um, exiting the car wash onto the, um, common easement. Is that something that you're prepared to do, is to, um, to install some type of signage? You know, trucks entering and exiting, or so, you know, something like that?
I know in the site plan, there's already signage that was provisioned for that. I'm not sure exactly what that signage is, 'cause I'm not looking at it right now. If there was something like another sign saying trucks entering, turning, something of that nature, I'm sure that we could accommodate the town with that.
Do you think that's something maybe you could, uh, work with Mr. Houston, and perhaps, uh, we could even, uh, run it past Chief Stone, so that he's aware of what we're trying to do to mitigate the situation?
I, I think Michelle's suggestion of a warning sign there is entirely appropriate, I think would help the situation, so.
Michael, do you mind if I call you Michael?
No, go right ahead.
Did you, um, it, we don't have a car wash, um, in this area, so how did you establish, um, the queuing, the, I just don't recall?
The queuing was established basically in relation to being able to let cars access in and get around the building if the line is excessively long, so there's easy access in and out, as well as we were very concerned about backing anything up into uh, the Joe Fran property or onto Route one fifteen. So we obviously wanted the largest lane possible. Just imagining that people aren't gonna wait in a line that is, let's say, you know, thirty cars long. But the fact that you have thirty cars, you still can operate around the site, you can go to the vacuum islands, there's other things you can do, but you can get out of the property successfully and safely.
I don't, I'm not in the business, but all the car washes I've been in have long, um, queuing areas. Is that, is that, is there a standard?
Well, there's, there's not necessarily a standard that I'm aware of. In talking with the car wash distributors and so forth, they, they give recommendations. Again, the longest area that you have is the most effective. So if people can make more decisions, and they can get out easily without having to wait in line. If someone wished to stay in line, that's not a problem. If they wished to leave, be able to leave, go to four kicks, maybe go to the soccer game, and then return uh, when the line wasn't as long. Again, that's, that's only uncertain at certain times. Very high salt, sand, uh, bad weather conditions where people really use the car wash to basically have safety with visibility, which are the busiest times that we tend to run into, uh, not counting the weekends.
The queuing length on the current site plan is superior to anything I think you could possibly attain if you put the entrance opposite Valley Street. Because right now, the queuing could extend all the way across the site, all the way back on the site, and a portion across. I mean, it's just, it kind of maximizes the queuing. And the one thing that would just be unacceptable is to have vehicles extend out into the street or into a driveway or anything else. The, the, the site, I think, is, is well-designed in terms of maximizing queuing, which is the real key to a, a car wash in terms of making it work.
Keeping people moving.
If, if there was ever a queuing situation while we're working, I will call the police because we, we are then limited to one lane, and we couldn't, we can't run our business with that.
Yeah, no, I'm familiar with your industry enough where there's demerge if, you know, if they get delayed, and so. I mean, I, I think what I'm hearing is that, you know, we don't anticipate that will be a problem, especially Monday through Friday, which is, I think, you know, your business is right daytime hours, so.
You have employees here, right?
At this?
Do you operate on weekends at all? Anything going on on weekends? The car wash that I use, which maybe I'll switch to yours once it's open, but.
You'll at least try it.
Have the, um, complimentary, someone dries your car when you're done. Do you guys offer that?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay. I was just curious, I'm just trying to think of.
Well, she won't be going to your car wash.
No, no, no.
They have a dryer.
You have to give it a try before you can decide.
Yes, exactly. But no, my point was just trying to think of simple ways, I mean, because that, that person, if that service existed, literally could just say to each person, and I know not everybody would use that, 'cause there's other people vacuuming, whatever. I'm just trying to think of simple ways that could, you know, hey, watch for trucks when you're leaving, just, you know, that you could train your workers upon, you know, just simple ways, but that could be effective. Because I think you're right, I think the trucks are one thing, and they can watch, but there's the person leaving, and, you know, they're doing whatever they're doing, and so as much as you can kind of plant in their head right before they're leaving, just take an extra look. I think that, that would help.
It's a great point, and not just before they're leaving, but maybe initially, when this car wash opens up, you know, during the weekdays, maybe the one that, when they're collecting the money and doing, they could say, you know, just be, be attentive, it's your first time here, you know, and just, you know.
It will be very well manned, especially in the early stages. It'll be very well manned so that all the customers can have no issues coming in and out, they'll learn how the machinery works, the advantages of it. We, we're preparing for all of that. What you can't prepare for is a truck that comes down one fifteen at forty miles an hour and just turns a ninety-degree angle into that lot. And that's what happens there all the time. And I can tell you this, if you put granite curbing there, which I believe is going in, vertical granite cur- granite curbing, that will probably stop because those tires will be blown out.
Well, I think once they see a building go there with activity, that will stop as well, because these drivers are trained, as somebody else was saying, to be in much more complex situations than this clear, open rural road that they're just cutting across a lane, turning in. I mean, uh, they're used to being in very urban environments where.
Most of these truck drivers don't even speak English.
But they have to have a valid driver's license, that's not, that's not a good justification for not driving well.
But, but they don't. Some of them speak southern, but they don't speak English. And it isn't a requirement for this long-distance travel.
I'm not saying they have to talk to anybody, I'm just saying they have to follow the, the laws.
And, and Mr. Roy, I think Michael just, just verified your point, which is that he's seen the trucks, and they don't stop.
I think he did.
How many different companies, trucking companies, en- enter and, you know, exit, exit your facility there? I mean, is it multiple, or usually just a?
I, I don't know the answer, honest.
You don't maintain your own fleet, Mr. Roy?
No, sir.
Okay.
In my life, in, in the furniture industry, I've never leased or owned a truck.
Even the furniture stores don't anymore?
Uh, furniture stores are not the business I'm in. I supply them.
Right. I've seen your products.
So, uh, in terms of the concern, you know, I, I heard Michael about a tree that was planted, and there's a light pole or something like that, so. So what, what, what is the plan, and maybe, Mr. Houston, maybe you could comment?
Well, Miss, Mr. Sparrow, uh, the, I believe, operations manager, or comparable title to Joe Fran, uh, did indicate to, uh, Michael that he would allow the tree, uh, and the light pole to be relocated. Michael was also gracious enough to, uh, agree to do that at no cost, and also to extend the sprinkler lines for the lawn, uh, under the driveway. So Michael had volunteered to do that, uh, a- and Joe Fran was gracious enough to allow it to be done. So that, that agreement was reached there in the field, and I, I think that was a positive step, so.
Okay, so at this point, it's just the, uh, the site line issues, basically?
The only reason I brought that up was Mr. Houston's correct, we did, we did agree to that, was yet, I, I'm thinking that might be the tree that Mr. Roy is talking about. And I'm hoping that is.
Yeah.
Okay. Which we've already agreed to, to assist in the movement of that, since we're gonna have equipment down there, and we'll move it.
So our, our planting and lighting plan originally approved, had it sitting in the middle of the frontage road?
I, I, I think that it, it's, it's off by a few feet where, where it was planted, I think, is what happened.
Well, I drove by the site, and these things are right in the middle of the frontage road.
Okay, so that leaves the line, the line of sight opportunity, if you will.
This is a small tree.
It's the pine tree.
No, 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 the, the, the evergreens, the evergreens.
Okay.
And if you have a, a tree removal guy coming out, would, I mean, would you be opposed to working with each other to potentially get those pine trees looked at at the same time? I mean, he's gotta mobilize someone to remove the tree anyway.
What I offered is, because our property abuts that frontage road, we would, we would handle that. I also explained to Mr. Sparrow that if we do any damage to his lawn or anything, he's got a beautiful site, we're certainly not gonna leave it like that. We're gonna put everything back to the very best of our ability, that's within reason of, of a major construction site. So we're not the kind of neighbors that are gonna tear somebody's lawn up and leave it that way. Uh, that's not what we're gonna do. We're gonna remove the tree. My one stipulation was the electrical end of that, I'm not gonna have an electrician out there, someone will have to hook that light back up once we place it for him, and, and we're already prepared to do that. But I'm not going across the lawn with heavy-duty equipment and so forth on the other side of that road to, to remove that.
Yep.
If it was somebody going up there and just cutting it down or something, we, we'd entertain that, but at this stage, um, you know, we wanna stay adjacent to our site.
Mr. Roy, how many trees are, the evergreens are there? I mean, is that just one evergreen that has many shoots, or is it, how many trunks? I mean, could, could it be thin?
I think it's a cluster, isn't it?
I think there were two.
Yeah, you can't really tell, you can't.
This here, yeah, that, yeah, yeah, you can see that, yeah.
It's either two or three, it's hard to tell. I think it's two.
I mean, Mr. Roy, I mean, how about if, you know, we, we worked with you to, to thin it so that it improves the situation?
We'll be happy to meet you on Friday.
Okay, okay. Pick a, it has to be the morning, but aside from that, pick a time, I'll be there.
Ten o'clock.
Ten, ten, does that give you, gives you an hour, what time, you're eleven o'clock?
I should probably leave around eleven.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make one more point? The question of that, uh, easement, I'm not sure was ever registered at the registry of deeds. My attorney did not find it, I don't know if that problem has been resolved at this stage. However, we did draft a couple of letters and addressed them to the Joe Fran group, and I am not sure that that issue has been resolved, and we've been trying to do that in a very reasonable manner. However, uh, it's still in question, at least to me.
Okay. Has that been directed, I mean, this, this concern, this discovery on your part, has it been directed to any officials within the town of Norfolk, or is this something that you've just been working?
No, it has not, we've directed it to our neighbor.
Okay. I mean, if, if you would be interested in providing us a copy so that we're familiar with the situation, I'm not sure.
I believe the town should have a copy on, on, on file. I, I mean, I'm not.
Of the easement, of where the easement would be.
Of what the, of the easement documents.
Can you look into Joe Fran's file?
I, I believe you provided it, correct?
Um, we, we certainly will provide the easement that we've given to the planning board, I believe it was the planning board, where we will sign that, providing our easement. However, I do not believe there's an easement on file at the registry of deeds granting that easement to the town of Norfolk.
Plain language, you may not have the right. It'd be private property without the easement.
Well, it's a requirement of the, the site plan.
I know, but at this point, it's not that much involved.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you look into that?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
The frontage road would have required, to, to establish the frontage road on your property, we would have had, we would have drawn it as, as an easement, but it's only, we would have only had it on the plan, it would have required a legal instrument.
With all the professionals that I employed?
It, it might have already been done.
You're telling me that there's something wasn't done?
I know, knows.
I'm wondering if that plan was ever filed at the registry of deeds, right? That's what it would have taken.
Well, the plan probably was, but the easement may not have been filed.
It would have come separate, it would have been, right? We would have, we would have had, we would have recognized it on the plan, but we wouldn't have necessarily seen the easement uh, at time of, uh, signing the plan.
It might be worth your while to, to write something documenting what specifically the concern is, so that we can work with the other.
Technically, it was a condition on the site plan.
Oh, sure, sure.
Yes, you know.
So it's really not incumbent upon the, the butter to do it, I think it's something that we should have followed up with.
I think all Michael is asking is, is if you could find the letters that he hasn't, that, that have come into your office, and take a look at them, and see if you have information that would help the situation.
I thought we got copies on emails that involved Mr. Sparrow.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thanks.
Right.
But you're not going to get any information from me, be- because we don't know anything about this.
Okay, can we as a board require him to follow up with this as part of his site plan approval?
Absolutely.
So then we can make the requirement tonight.
This is the thirteenth year.
It would have, yeah, and it would have been done early thirteen years ago.
Something that should have happened in the year two thousand?
You might have done it. Your, 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 your team might have done it.
It hasn't been completed as of a couple months ago, 'cause we were copied on letters in between Attorney Mitchell, is it Mitchell?
Yes, it is.
And Ed Sparrow.
Oh, we were copied.
Yeah, I saw them going through in the early stage and this coming.
Oh.
So, I don't know yet, in the last two months, if it's been rectified, but it was not in existence. So, I don't know yet, in the last two months if it's been rectified, but it was not in existence a couple of months ago. That was before we were involved in the rest of this. I think it was when you first broke out.
I think we approached it before that and I think we approached it again when we first broke down. I think that's when.
I think that's when we heard about it.
I think you're right.
Right.
Mr. Roy, thank you very much for coming. You know, I, I understand your concerns and we'll work with you as best we can to try to, uh, make the best of the situation, okay? Thank you. Okay.
Anything else, Michael?
Uh, no, I just thank you very much, Boyd.
Betsy.
Okay.
Could you see if there's a copy of the easement in the file?
I've already looked.
Oh, is there one?
No, I don't believe we can.
No, no, what I'm saying is, I'm saying is your schedule, you are moving on your schedule. Your schedule hasn't been delayed by this.
Not, not at this time.
Okay.
However, we wanna make sure things are done right.
Yeah, of course, of course.
In our due diligence, we look for that document and we, we couldn't find it. I'm not saying that it's not there. But we haven't had any assistance in relation to, uh, finding that.
I didn't have it. I just went through the whole thing.
I haven't seen the, um, Joe Fran approval in a long time, but I would be really surprised.
You know, it's, it's a good question.
On the frontage road easements, we don't take.
It, it, wasn't it a requirement?
No, we, we researched it and we actually saw in, on the conditions.
I think it's a, a right to the abutters to pass and repass over the frontage road.
I just can't find where it was filed.
Joe Fran owns the land in fee.
No, it's absolutely.
Joe Fran or anybody else with the frontage.
And you don't have it in the file, you don't have a copy.
Rights to pass and repass to the...
So, at this point, I just wanted to bring that to the board.
Well, I wasn't gonna open up that rat's nest.
Well, that's an interesting, I don't think that question.
Guess what, you can.
I think it's just provide the documentation.
Well, I mean, I, I still come back to getting something from you to explain what specifically, you know, it, it's... Because verbal is one thing, but, you know, this is a legal process and I...
The first time he ever showed up for this, I remember, was after.
Betsy says she hasn't, she hasn't been there.
I think I have provided.
After, after appeal period, was the first time he ever showed up?
All right, well, I guess we'll come back to you then if we, we need to.
I, I know him, but.
But you have the, you have the explanation of what's missing.
Yes, we have, we have it in the, in the site plan.
And you have, you have the car wash's efforts to try to find it at the register.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll come back to you, I guess, if we need something further, but, yeah. Thank you, Michael, appreciate it.
The, the driver shouldn't be operating in a manner that they can't control the vehicle.
Okay.
Extended in the section, as you said, in urban areas, there are much more complex, you know, single areas.
Yeah.
Do you want me to, uh, hold these photos?
Oh, for God's sake, stop talking like that.
Okay, next item of business is Dunkin' Donuts located at one thirty-four Main Street, a proposed drive-through layout. Um, you know, we've actually met on this a few times and we've seen a few, um, variations of a, of a plan. Um, so, you know, we have, I, I'm not sure what we have here, Tom, if it's, uh, more, more of the same and just trying to decide between the various alternatives or if there's anything new here. Uh, but, uh, that's the item of, of business that we have before us here this evening. So, would you like to, please, uh, introduce yourself, please?
Yes, my name is Ted Primbus, I'm the, uh, friend, one of the franchise owners for the Norfolk store, Dunkin' Donuts. I think we met the last time and, um, you told us to go and get a, either a sketch or a letter from our engineer, which we did. And I think our engineer spoke with Mr. Houston and, uh, they did some sketch regarding, you know, go parallel behind the, uh, the entrance so we can have the drive-through lane go before the dumpster and go straight up, so we can close our parking lot. And then we can have the parking lot only for customers they're using to come in inside. And then, I think will be easy for us and it makes sense. And also, we tried to avert a lot of traffic from the street, uh, going back up, so we can fit another, at least sixteen to eighteen cars. And I think that was the best solution we came up with.
So, does the driveway start in, is it the same driveway of these two sketches, Tom? Which?
Yeah, which sketch are we talking about?
Which one do you like?
There, there are two labeled proposed, so I'm not sure which.
Right, I think we're talking about the, uh, the first one, which...
Oh, there's one point one and then one point one alt. Which one are we talking about?
Hi, John. Uh, one dot one, A one dot one.
That adds, that adds four more c- cars to the queue.
Right.
Now, I, I'm not familiar with the problems that are in the center of town because I head out the other way.
It's a popular spot.
Yeah.
What's the problem with the, my, I hear that the problem is it gets backed up on Main Street, turning.
Yes.
And if a train's coming up.
So, four cars is not gonna do it. Is that, is that probably a good assumption?
I thought the last time we saw this, Tom, that you had required not only this, the sketches have not changed since the last time we saw it.
No, it isn't.
But I thought you would have required, or suggested some additional traffic analysis.
That, that's correct.
Was that done, that's what I thought you were talking to the engineer about.
Well, yeah, I, I, I think we had suggested that a formal traffic study would be required addressing queuing. Clearly, you know, there's this one-page letter which, uh, with...
Yes, yeah, we do.
But this, like, has the type of quantitative basis.
So, you're saying this one doesn't change anything?
Okay, and, so, I, I mean, I think what my colleagues are talking about is there was another plan that had, um, access off the, uh, the road, which is the access road to the parking lot in town, so, so we've got a...
That's the alternate one.
Yeah, that's the alternate one.
Right, but I think we met, I think we, the, uh, my partner Frank Barun, I think we met with the building inspector and he told him it doesn't make any sense to go to their road down. First of all, customers are going to confuse. Second, we're gonna lose more business, you know, using two entrances, one for the parking lot and one going all the way up and coming up, uh, through the dumpster from the, from the side street. And I think that's what we discussed the last thing, I think the last meeting we had with you from the board here. That we can provide you some kind of a sketch, how the cars are gonna come in and move the menu board also. The existing menu board, which we have right now, just move it back a little bit, it will make a lot of senses so we can stack up more cars and it will be more easier for us to, uh, move the cars going through the drive-through.
Move the menu board which way?
Backwards.
Back to the fifth.
Just, right, just a little island, a little island we have, as the curve goes there, and where the parking lot will be shattered off, so for the menu board right there.
That does make sense, you queue it.
The whole goal would be, the whole goal would be to have, to have separate people going in park and then have another lane so that people aren't backing up and people are getting jammed.
Yeah.
People from the street aren't seeing jams, so it's...
Yeah. One of the things, Steve, that you, that, that, that the plan doesn't really show, but, um, those of us that have to go by there very early, you can't use the parking in there now, so you can't choose to park and go inside because the queuing is in the way. So, all this parking isn't really available when, when the cars queue up to get in the way. So, if I, if I didn't want to stand in, uh, if I didn't wanna wait in line, I wouldn't have the choice to park. Now, you have a choice to park. So, there is, so it actually, it may not be, it may only be a few extra cars, and I'm not the engineer, but you get access to all of the parking that you don't have now.
Well, that's true.
And a few people might get out of their cars because it'd be faster.
Yes.
So, I, I do think though, you know, I think the board could give some initial guidance and I think either one of your alternatives is a measurable improvement over the existing condition because you're not blocking the people in the spaces, the queuing is longer and all this type of thing. But before you actually got site plan approval, my recommendation to the board is that the queuing length needs to be quantified, needs to be studied by a traffic engineer. He or she should go out and count the existing queue there so that we know what you have for customers. You probably want to provide the engineer with cash register data, which is probably available over a much longer period than the engineer should be sitting out there so that we can quantify the maximum number of, of, uh, customers that would show up. What traffic engineering uses a lot is the ninety-fifth percentile. In other words, you know, five percent of the time, you may have some crazy situation. But ninety-five percent of the time, your queue shouldn't be extending back out onto the street. And right now, we don't have information to, to make that determination. Is this better from looking at it? Sure. But what the board really should know is ninety-five percent of the time, there won't be a vehicle out on, on Main Street or under that alternative out on the parking lot access. You know, we, we have to put a number to that before you get a final approval.
Just trying to minimize our cost also, you know, we're just trying to, we spend so much money, you know, for the remodeling of the buildings, it's gonna cost us a lot of money to do this project here, especially, you know, when you pay the whole parking lot. It's not a cheap project and we're just trying to minimize and make it better for ourselves and also better for the, uh, for the town and get an access.
But, I mean, I've done queuing studies and what it really involves is probably, you know, uh, your facility is morning oriented. So, probably two or three mornings, you're going to have an engineer out there for probably three hours, the, the pre, you know, the key morning hours. They're gonna quantify that, they're gonna look at your cash register data and come up with a study. I mean, it, it, it's, you know, probably thirty hours a time, forty hours a time, and it's not inconsequential. But if we don't have that quantitative basis, I don't know how the town can be, uh, assured that vehicles aren't gonna be backing up into the street, which is, that's something we just gotta avoid.
If you take, uh, one point one and you take a look at their new queuing lane and you just shift that to the left into the middle of the parking lot, okay? As far as I can see, they're picking up three, maybe four vehicles because that's what the existing queuing lane is.
That's what they, that's what they proposed.
Okay.
It, it addresses the problem of blocking the spaces, but you're right, in terms of additional vehicles, it's...
If you are there when the gates are down at eight o'clock at the roundabout and there's people filling up at Daleys, o- okay, and there's three cars sitting, waiting to take a left in while the other ones are trying to squeeze by and go straight, it's, it's more than three. So, you've got three or four. Um, I agree with Anvia's comment that I am the type of person that would never sit in a twelve-car queue.
Yeah, just don't, just don't do it.
Right, I'd hop out and park myself. Will that alleviate some of it? I don't know. But maybe that is exactly what can be determined by your traffic engineer.
I, I think the point of spending the money is, is the fact that, you know, you could go ahead and build this A one point one and it may not meet the goal, so then you've just wasted your money. So, the point of spending the money ahead of time is to say, you know, it doesn't even make sense to do this because if the traffic study showed that, you know, X percentage of the time, you have cars in the road now and we're only decreasing that by, let's say, two percent, well, you've just wasted a bucket load of money and the town's still gonna say to you, hey, you haven't solved the problem. So, I think that's really the merit in, in spending a little bit of money up, up front. It may suggest that, you know, going back on, is it Carson Lane, is that what we call it?
Carlson Circle.
Carlson Circle.
Right. Alternatively, having that choke point moved down.
The, the only thing I like better about the, the Carlson, and I get what you're saying in the building inspector, you know, it's confusing. People would learn, but it is confusing. But they can get out of that lane as well, which they can't now. If you get in that queue and you're stuck behind the person that decides to individually choose twenty-five munchkins.
Right.
You can't abort out of that, you know?
That's what I'm looking at. I mean, are you averse to the Carlson, the Carlson?
Um...
Carlson Circle Lane.
Carlson Circle.
Are you averse to, to that, I mean, as far as, you know, whether it's from a cost standpoint or from a property standpoint?
I just think people are gonna get confused. That's...
I think we're getting a conversation with the building inspector and he figured out that it's not the right way to go down that road, Carlson Street. Because first of all, we're gonna lose business, number one, customers are gonna confuse and we're gonna create more traffic. And I think he's the one, he told us, he told my partner Frank, Frank Barun, is that the best way to do it, just get the entrance and go parallel. It makes sense and stack up the cars and go that way.
Well, first of all, it's, I don't think it's him to qualify your business plan. Secondly, as in a butter to Carlson Circle, you have every right to be on that. And realistically, um, people that regularly drive up to a coffee place, I think they miss it once and then figure it out. I, I don't see that as a valid concern. And if you actually take that paving lane that you're creating on your second lot, I think that's probably about the same amount of pavement that you'd be pulling out to Carlson Circle. And you might not have to touch your existing parking lot at all.
I think we were here at the last meeting, uh, two meetings ago, and I think you guys, you don't feel comfortable with that going all the way down to Carlson and coming out.
Well, well, I, I mentioned that there could be some confusion, but that's all part of, you know, the due diligence and that's what we should do.
And that's why we're here, we like to work together, you know, which one is the, the best, or you spend something to do it.
But to Michelle's point, to Michelle's point, you know, I, I look at the A one one drawing and I look at the landscaping that's planned between the queue and between the parking. And, um, you know, I'm not sure if it's so much of an issue today because perhaps you could do something about, you know, the issue that Michelle raises where once you're in the queue, you can't get out. But in the future, I'm not sure that that's going to be possible, um, you know, if that property is developed, um, adjacent to the Dunkin' Donuts. So, um, you know, I, I, I have some concerns personally about A one one in terms of whether or not that's the best overall solution.
Is, so is the concern just if someone orders a big order, 'cause we are gonna move the menu board and that, so that'll, so that'll increase, I'm sorry, God.
Where's the menu board?
It's right here.
I, I know.
It's right behind the...
It's right behind the back door, like diagonal to it, so it's about a two...
So, we'll move back another, uh, to the, to the island there, which is...
Yeah, where it's shown on the plan is where it is today.
Here?
Right. So, according to the letter, according to the letter, it says we, we, we'll move back, I think.
Right, right here. So, it's a significant move.
Where's he pointing to?
So, if you order, you'll have a lot more time. There should be no excuse why the employees can't get the product out and get the cars going.
But do you really wait, 'cause I'm a patron, do you really ever wait that long at your window? I don't...
If someone comes in and orders about ten wraps, yes.
Yeah.
Someone orders about four or five sandwiches at a time.
I, I think honestly, I think moving the menu board is gonna do more for the line than just about anything else. Because I, I agree, it's probably not how, it's not a problem with your staff getting it out in time.
No, the menu board's too short to the window.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the problem.
I think there's two, for me, there's two concerns with A one point one, and one is what we're talking about that, you know, the frustrated customer who wants to get out of the line has no options. The bigger concern for me is have we really made an improvement? By adding four cars to the queue, what does that do with the percentage of cars hanging out on Main Street? What if we cut for the percentage of time they're hanging out on, on Main Street? And that's why absent of sort of some statistical data to really analyze, have we made an improvement? It's difficult for me to suggest, hey, yeah, why don't you spend all this money and do that because I don't know that it's solving the real problem.
I don't think you're gonna see much of a cost differential going along the back of that other lot.
We have no problem going back, that's what we're here, you know, to work, to see which way is the best way.
And, 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 Tom, I mean, when people wanna find their coffee, they'll pull in one day and they won't do it the second day.
I have no problem, as long as they're gonna walk.
Or good signage.
We're looking for future development, so we don't restrict it. If we have a lane going up, if we wanna build something in that lot, then it might be a problem.
Right.
That's the only thing we, you know...
But you're impinging on it, on the width where you might need it, you have more depth to deal with.
Right. It, it almost leaves you a better site development going that way too for future.
Right.
I think they can address the getting out.
Right.
They really can just by opening up, and just by, just by opening up the curb into one of those parking spaces. They can, they can address a way out, um... And the menu, and the menu board is gonna move the line faster. But I agree that it doesn't, it it's, um, oh, with the planning board, we think you should plan out. Um, whether or not there's gonna be a value to, you know, four extra cars.
We just like to work both ways, for ourselves and also for the for the town, you know, just.
Yeah, right, right. And I, in my personal opinion, is that, is that I I understand that if you have only one driveway that goes for both. The drive through and, um, and the parking lot, that you've captured your your customer. You know, I I make a lot of stupid mistakes before I have my morning coffee. So I don't like to have a lot of decisions to be made.
Steve?
No, I I actually can see merit in both of them. Since I don't, I don't see the queue, so since I, I'm not familiar with it, it's hard for me to gauge whether or not. That this will alleviate it, reducing four cars on Main Street, does four cars bring it all the way up to the gas station or?
Problem is you haven't go in both directions, you have cars queuing southbound and northbound, or would it be east and west?
Yeah, both directions.
Oh, they're queuing from bo, oh, okay.
Because they can't get in.
And they're also pulling out of the opposite end of Carlson Circle, trying to cut through.
And some of them are turning.
And some of them are turning in, that's why if you move the choke point down.
Off of Carlson Circle.
The far end of Carlson Circle, it's taking it out of that whole mess.
Daily and out of the rotary and.
It's a circle, a side road.
It's the street.
Is that a private way or is it?
It's not an accepted road, no.
Not acceptable.
But it is a public, it is a public road.
But you're on it, right, because you own the lot, right?
We're on it.
I don't think so.
Yeah, we're on it, yeah, but if it's a developer, if we're a developer, if we have the right to do it.
I don't know.
If we go that way, that's, that was the question.
There was a question last time.
Two times.
I thought Carlson Circle was the first one.
We said that, you know, there was an issue.
We need to talk to the guys that own the properties.
Yeah, then what's the one, what's the one?
That's a circle, or is that just a driveway?
It's put in a building office.
You need to have your attorney look at that.
So Carlson Circle technically isn't.
I suspect you can use it, but board has no way of answering that.
Yeah. It's a public way. Yeah, their address is Main Street, Disco.
Anyway, so.
Yeah, no, that road is a private.
What are your merits that you see?
That's not Carlson Circle.
Well, I've always thought that that getting it away from the intersection was always a really good idea, and I always thought that bringing it off of Carlson Circle. Is the best idea, the only, um, the the, I see the the problem that you have of directing people over there. And I'm not sure how how to do it with signage, uh, unless you just have a sign that says.
Drive through entrance.
Parking only with a drive-in arrow or something for people when they get there new, and then they'll. Just glance over and say, oh, there's the entrance over there, I I'm not sure if that's the the only way to do it, but it's, uh. I do like the idea of getting, um, the the entrance. Away from the choke points here and off of Carlson Carlson Circle.
That's not Carlson Circle.
It isn't.
That's a private way.
Oh, but they're adjacent to a private way, so they have.
They have rights.
They have rights to it. Do you have a preference?
So maybe the traffic engineer would help us.
Yeah, the traffic engineer idea is a pretty good one.
Because he might have, he might have an expert opinion.
They have experience with another one.
I think from what, um, from what I understood, and I, I think they spoke to, our engineer spoke to Mr. Houston and then.
Yes.
And then you give them some suggestion and back and forth, and I think was, they tell you was the best solution to go parallel, the way it is A one, to go around, and then. If we move the, I think from our experience, if we move the menu board, which it is right now, move it back to the island, and we close that parking there, so customers, they won't. Go into the drive-through, they can only park and come into the store, I think if we move the menu board, the cars will be flying. The cars will be flying, we can stack about six, seven cars from there, a list that says five here, but we can stack six, seven.
We did it at another location in Foxborough.
And I think it's more easier to to move up the cars that way.
There's a, there's one over, uh, they're they're all over, but on Route one forty. Coming from KP High School.
Yeah, and Rentham, right at Rentham Center.
Oh, Rentham?
Oh, no, no.
Rentham Center.
That that.
No, heading towards Franklin.
That's not us.
Yeah, on one forty, that's horrible.
Well, they have a long queue, now, it's never full, it's never full, but they have a long queue, and I'm just trying to, you know, think about.
Wait till you drop your kid off at Dare Camp in the summer, it's full.
Yeah, okay.
After all, the parents are done dropping the kids at the camp.
I'm not saying it's a model, I'm just saying that, you know, this idea of having a long queue and you're kind of stuck in there, but. They may have it set up so that there's some asphalt curbing or something, so you can exit from the queue, I I don't recall. But I'll look, maybe tomorrow morning.
Now, which one in in, you said in Foxborough, which one in Foxborough were you talking about? The one on Route one, right? Near the Lafayette House there or?
On one forty?
Yeah.
Where the Stop and Shop is, Steve.
Oh, okay. So you said you did something down there that's similar to what is being recommended here?
Nah, not similar, it was, it was, it was one by like Job Lot further down. Towards the Mansfield border.
Oh, that one in Foxborough. The one in the front of the gas station?
You know.
We moved it, we moved it all of it. I I think moving the menu board, it will, uh, it will make a lot of sense. And the way it is on A one, I don't think we have any problem, I mean, we can do some more research, but I think we feel more comfortable, we save our lot also. Uh, for future, if we have to develop or anything, and, uh.
Could you do this?
I observe the traffic.
Could you do a test and move the menu board, just move the menu board with the existing setup right now and see if that improves things?
Well, it's a little bit.
Can't move it either way.
It's got wires.
Everything's underground, so.
But you can move it either way, it's just like a first step.
But I don't know that they can move it very far, because then you're in the.
Right.
Can't move it, they're watching.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, park, right.
No, they can't move it too far.
You know, McDonald's has a special orders slot.
We can do that, we can do something for us.
Uh, you know, I'm just looking behind here where it says existing landscaping. And if somebody's ordering, you know, for twenty five different munchkins or something.
I'm glad you brought that up, because we have a.
Now, where? I mean, just on the larger orders during the peak times, no, and you know, that's only when the trains are hitting, the commuters. And if there's a way to basically say, you want six breakfast sandwiches, just pull up the left, you have a, you have a door right out the back.
We can definitely do that, because if the town would allow us, I'm not sure.
None of the town, we just move it up to the, uh, Larden Park on the.
You mean like an express lane kinda, right?
Well, like sometimes you have a special order, something like down in Millis, you know, you go through the drive-through and. I guess there's a couple of spots on the left side that always seem to be empty, but it's basically special orders. And it's people that basically have large.
Good question, we can do something on our stores right now.
And I bet you that may alleviate even, it's basically a way of circumventing moving back the trial menu board, which they plan to do anyways.
That's what we do, we tell the customers to park one of the parking spaces where it's around in the existing parking lot, and we have a person. He can deliver out there and then they can leave fast.
You know, our only interest is getting the traffic off the streets, you know, we don't care if you do it here, you do it there, but if it doesn't work here, you're gonna end up doing it here.
So it's.
My suggestion is put them right where my finger is there, you know, put a couple of spaces right there, your person can walk out the door.
That's true, yeah.
And, you know, give the special orders.
Yeah, I'd say to do that.
Yeah, we are gonna do, we are gonna do that.
McDonald's and other people do that as.
We'll definitely do that.
I mean, we're gonna, we we have a beautiful building, we spent so much money, we're gonna repave in the whole parking lot, we're gonna make it, you know.
You're pulling the gas in, right?
The ideal and everything.
Sorry, and.
Oh, the gas is in already?
So, yes, it's in now, that's why we do finalize, and, uh. We'd like to have you a more decent menu board than one we got right now. We don't gonna go and be on and represent something like McDonald's or anybody like that, no, we don't have any ideas. But at least the same color we have on the building, because the menu board we have right now, I think it causes more problem to the customer, reading. And see what we have and what we don't. Versus then, you know, so.
We have a picture.
I do have a plan here, and it's okay with the board, I mean, take a look at them.
He says he has a picture for us.
Yeah. Yeah, we have another here, let's get it out to board.
And how far back on this schematic are you putting it?
We'll travel around with nice wraps in the island, we'll move the menu board to the second island as the curve goes around, so we have something like that, it's even smaller, please.
Yeah.
So could you, could you show me where you would put the menu, menu board?
Yeah, the thing says only one.
We just move back about ten feet from the hood, okay?
So right now it's.
Coming here, so it's right here, so we'll move it right here. So if we close, if we close the parking lot here, the way this guy closed, we can move the menu board here, and this guy here. Because we do have an island there, go around, so we can put this menu board, and we travel them around, you know, with wraps and everything, so it doesn't.
Two cars, maybe?
One, I think, and of course, we know the, there's not gonna be any license arrows like that, we're gonna put, you know, everything.
Oh, you got it?
We'll make it more beautiful and everything, so.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure you will, yeah, I'm sure you will.
And we do the same colors as the, uh, the town allows and also as the building, the same colors as the building. And I think we make more, um, for the customer to, uh. To, uh, go faster instead of really small, oh, whatever, what they have and what they don't have.
It'd be more of an impulse, they'd see something, order it.
And it gives them time to turn out. I think my advice to you is to start with the traffic study, you know? It'll be a few thousand dollars, but, you know. Your engineer should be able to predict, you know, what the ninety fifth percentile queue is, they'll probably. Have to, you know, time the transactions with a menu board in this place, you can go to some other place that has a a menu board further back. I mean, any queuing analysis is only dependent on two things, it's dependent on the number of vehicles that are approaching, and it's dependent on processing time. What you're instinctively saying is moving back the menu board is gonna improve processing time, which is correct. We just don't know how much it's gonna improve processing time, so I think your engineer to fill in that piece, you'd have to go look at another board and, you know, just time.
We can tell them, you know, we can get in touch with you and, uh, you know, it should be, uh, which is very helpful and.
I mean, I, I think you start with that, because then the town would have assurance, I mean, but both of these have. You're showing sixteen cars.
Either way, but as long as we don't, in the future, we don't have no restrictions to build something, we wanna do it, if we go all the way down, Carson come up. Uh, as long as we, uh. We can go either way to make it easier for ourselves, I know will benefit us and also benefit, you know, the town, it will be, uh, stack up the cars and, uh.
But we also, we ju, we just passed a bylaw that allowed a planning multi-lot development in small, smaller lots in the B one, too, right? We don't need the eighty thousand feet anymore.
But if you.
So you don't have to have a thirty thousand to build.
That's true, yeah, that's true.
So we're here, we're just working with you guys to make the best of it, isn't, you know, either we do this way or that way, or, you know, just make it beautiful and work.
Cost-wise, though, if you count your six cars here, assuming the size is correct, there's six cars here, you're talking about the same amount of pavement, you still have overflow over here.
What's the cost difference between those?
You're right, but I understand what you said, correct, as long as the customers, they don't, um, I know if they're gonna find out where coffee is, they're gonna go, definitely. But somehow it might be a confusion, you know, for them to travel all the way down and come up, once twice, yeah, we might have some, in the beginning, we might have some, uh, people sitting outside in direct traffic, we're gonna have signs.
Actually getting out of their car, always.
So we, you know.
We still have someone in the costume.
We'll pass them, we'll do the, you know, and then we have some signs that's like you said, uh, drive up, drive through only, or, uh, parking only for cars, you know, of course, we can direct the, yeah.
Well, I heard, I heard different members of the board, uh, prefer different alternatives, so I think that. The traffic engineer and his and his evaluation could really make one alternative, you know, work, might work better. Because either, both of them had, had supporters.
The the number of vehicles queued is appreciably different between the alternatives.
Well, you know, it only, doesn't take too many, it's, doesn't take too many cars.
It has. Two, two more, you know, going with the A one one versus the A one one alternative, there's two less in that one versus A one one, the one that you're suggesting.
And then you add the, and then you add the processing time.
If I counted correctly.
Of moving the menu board, and then you add, then you add the, you know, get the slow poke out of the lane, um, alternative, and then you, you know. As far as the movement.
Let me ask if there's any concerns about, um, the proximity of the drive-through entrance to the roadway. You know, just in terms of somebody who's not familiar with that establishment, you know, to be Peter's point, once people, you know, people from town, you know, they do it once, it's a non-issue forevermore, but. You know, someone from outside of town pulls in there and, um, is there any concern? Or should there be concern about the distance before one needs to take a right, and are they going to see that? And take a right, or are they gonna be backing up because they've passed it and didn't realize that's the drive-through lane?
Uh, I'm not sure this is the optimal configuration right there at the entrance, but.
Well, right, the thing, I think the the last, not the last meeting, but the minute before, I think there was some concern.
Right, was it too tight?
Regarding expensive going, if we go down to Carson coming up, we might need it, uh, somebody mentioned about drainage and water and stuff, others, other things, where the water's gonna go and everything. I think that was the concern for ourselves, going to expensive projects, some, do something like that, I don't know if the board has any concern about that.
Well, even if you add drainage here, I mean, even if you add, add pavement on A one one. You're still gonna have to deal with drainage, still gonna have to deal with collecting your 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 increased runoff.
I think there's a, I think there's a grade change that goes down into the, into that private drive that would, um.
Uh, it is one of those, but.
But they would ever capture it and bring it into their drainage system.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, yes, what I'm thinking, just, just quickly, is that, is that there'd be a lot more capturing going downhill than there would be, you know, parallel to the parking.
And and I think if you were to go with this one, at least our recommendation to the board would be to widen that out to two cars.
Oh, definitely.
So you have a bypass capability.
We definitely would widen it, so you should be able to get two cars.
I mean, either way, I.
Well, we're looking for the best, whatever it is, to work both ways, you know, I mean.
Who knows, I mean, the combination of all three may be fine.
When I spend my money to do it, it's not, you know, if we do it this way, if we do that way, it's, we'd like to, you know, whatever's got to go both of us and, uh.
And here's where your exit is, right there. Right there, you're putting that, you get a.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Get out, yeah.
So the comment about two cars, where, which.
I was just saying, along this edge here, to provide a bypass capability.
We're thinking, we're thinking along that same line.
I think the other, the other suggestion we're going to do, I think one, uh, one of the board members brought up the last, not the last minute, but the minute before. Either way we go, we we extend, we're making the driveway around the drive-through window longer, wider.
Wider.
So cars can go by, so in other words, we have to snowplow, there will be so much tight and hitting the window and things, so right now it's a little bit tight, so maybe we extend a little bit longer.
Yeah, we will put some, some parking spots in the front there in case someone has a big order, we can pull them up and then use, you know, the escape door, do the vestibule to go up and the product, so they're not queuing up the line. Right in the front versus.
In the front or in the rear?
No, in the front, we would put like a couple parking spots there.
After they pay.
After they pay, correct.
Uh, you know, for, for me personally, if 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 you would increase the width.
Yeah, and then he puts the parking.
So that if somebody wanted to get out, I mean, ideally, they just pull over and they can pull right around and get out of the facility, if you were to do that. And address this potential issue at the entrance, because I'm a little bit concerned about a ninety degree turn like that, so close to the entrance. Because my recollection, and it's pretty good, because I go there often, is that you've got an incline there as well, you know, so they're trying to manage that and they're.
And a, and a good.
Now they're taking a turn, so. I mean, if you were to address those things and do the the menu that you discussed, I I think that would go a long way towards resolving the the concerns. You know, maybe not forever, you know, you grow the business and you get that many more customers, you may, that's a good problem to have, your business is going that well.
Customers can stay too long in the drive-through, we have, uh, a time that, uh, they have to be stay there less than two minutes, sometimes we meet it. Sometimes, yes, if the sandwich is coming up and everything, yes, we try to meet, but two and a half minutes is at the, uh.
That's the standard, but I mean.
Standard.
Our, I mean, our goal personally is like minute forty-five, try to get them in and out, that's what I'm, my goal is. So.
So just.
You gotta, you know, get the customers and give them.
You can't have people waiting, they get there unhappy.
For symmetry, for symmetry, if you made the entrance to that queue be opposite where the cars are coming out of the drive-through, so in other words. You get the cars coming out, you get people coming in and parking, and if straight across was where the cars are pulling in to the queue. Same queue they're coming out of after they're served. I mean, nope, that's the motion detectors, you you'd lose, you'd lose a car length, a cou, you know, a couple car lengths, maybe. But you'd at least get that turn off the the road, you know, a little bit further off the road. Because I think you're right, I think, you know, what you're talking about doing is gonna address a lot of this, the. Because I think you're right, I think, you know, what you're talking about doing is gonna address a lot of this, those just moving the menu board.
Oh, definitely, yes.
The food's gonna be ready, you know, so.
That, that's why we try to, uh, to do it the best, minimize our costs, it isn't cheap project and, uh, and, and also we like to, uh, see, you know, to work, I mean, it isn't only to spend the money, do it and it doesn't work, I mean, that's not good for us and it's not good for everybody. But I, I, I think if we move the menu board and, uh, I think we'll make a lot of sense and the cash will move faster.
Would, would the board be open to changing the existing menu board, to what?
To what you propose?
In theory?
Yes.
Sure, but, what would be the problem with changing the existing menu board?
Uh, we just move, in other words, the color is right now, it's, uh.
Oh, colors?
I don't know, you.
Purgatory, so.
We don't have any like pictures on it right now.
Yeah, right, so in theory, sure, you can change it, you can make up requests. I, I, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a size requirement, right?
It's a sign, I guess.
It's a sign, it is a sign.
Well, the sign, it is.
The red box is a sign, then this is definitely.
Duncan on, it's not a sign, it doesn't have Duncan, in other words, the menu board doesn't say Duncan, it's not a sign, it's a piece of, uh, I don't know, how can you say it? It's a, it's a piece of, uh.
No, don't call it a sign, talk to Bullock.
Right, so.
I would.
Oh, well, if it doesn't.
It's not gonna say Duncan, the sign's not Duncan, it doesn't say anything on top or anything like that, so.
I would be cautious that something with letters on it.
Right, no letters, it's no letters, the way it is, it's no letters.
Oh, it definitely does, it was a whole menu on it.
Oh, it's a sign, no, I mean, on top, right on top of that, I know what you said, the other.
No, he'll call it a sign, I would bounce it off him. I mean, we understand it's part of your business, so.
Yeah, it's free, his office is right next door, just walk in and ask him the question.
Right, say, this is what we have proposed, he's gonna ask you what the size is, so get the dimension.
With knowing the size requirements.
Those aren't added, aren't they?
I'm wondering, hey, I actually understand what he's saying about how, about how there's a certain, there's a certain size it needs to be in order to, in order to function, which is not the same as a sign wanting to be bigger, so that it can have bigger lettering.
But don't we have, don't we have the ability to, um?
I really do understand that this, there might be, this might be a piece of equipment as opposed to a sign.
But if, and if he calls it a sign in there, we have the ability to give them relief, don't we?
Only to a certain maximum size, and the maximum size, this is kinda big.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty smooth, twenty-four square feet, there's some ceiling on it, it's pretty low.
It is a low ceiling, it is a low ceiling.
Four by six.
Um. When the car wash, does anybody remember the car wash had, had a big, uh, instruction sign?
Oh, okay.
No, you don't remember?
It did, yes.
It did have a big.
It, it has a menu board of what.
It had a menu board, it was large.
Done to your car, yeah.
I think it was pretty large.
If it's the same, no, but they.
But it had a lot less options than the menu board.
Sixteen.
Something off, you know, they have like small ones, I mean, they have like, like digital ones that are like really small, that have like.
They have apps.
Yeah. A lot of things.
No, I mean, when you spend the money to do something, you like to put a piece of, uh, uh, equipment or something that looks nice with the building.
Yeah.
That's what we like to do, you know, and, and move the straps around, dress it up really nice and doesn't look, you know, uh, one of those McDonald's size, no, I'm not, we're going, we're not going there. But at least with the town, uh, style and everything, it looks nice and beautiful also for customers and I P L to the customers also, and also to our business, that's what it is.
So i- if you just take a look at this, just so that you know how I'm thinking and then, you know, perhaps, uh, if it's, if it's something that's worth further discussion and consideration, maybe it could be drafted up, I'm not asking for an engineering drawing, but just, just as a sketch, it might be a, a good way to get everybody on the same page and see if we can rally around something.
Sure, I mean, it's.
I mean, if you wanna take a look at this.
Put your, put your.
Hey, if it pulls the stuff out of the intersection, it's fine with me, I don't care which way.
Is it two lanes?
He, he made it to two lanes.
It's two lanes.
So basically, I, I shifted, you know, this into the property a bit to where this parking space is. So maybe you can make that up over here, that parking space, um, because it looks like you've added a couple, um, because of the other changes in this design. You may be able to just increase one more, you've already got.
We just don't know what the requirements are for parking and.
Just, just so that you're not losing any spaces as a result of this in terms of parking, you wanna solve one problem and create another, right?
That's true, yeah.
So then, you know, I just set this up so this edge of this is kind of symmetric with this, um, and here's your entrance and, as we discussed, have the ability for cars to pull in, but also have the ability for cars to leave if there's some issue.
So will you suggest another, uh, one lane here, another lane here, correct?
Yeah, and in terms of, you know, what that lane needs to be in terms of materials.
Lane there, we're losing almost a whole lot for ourselves if we have a second lane there.
A whole lot, you're saying, well, I think that was already discussed.
So if we, if we have a lane here with the cars going to the drive-through, why we need a second lane here and not here, cause we wanna close the parking lot here. So why we need a se- first of all, if cars go inside the drive-through, they don't need a second lane here to exit. Once they get in here, they have to stay here to go to the, uh, drive-through menu board, correct?
Well, that's correct, but there was some concerns raised about, you know.
Probably want a bypass keeping, meeting that if somebody's there.
Right.
And the train's coming or.
Also he wants to leave somewhere.
And they have to leave, yeah.
I see, okay, okay.
So.
But you're right, it takes away, that's the downside of keeping it there rather than go to Carson.
But also, see, if you have to put a bypass lane in there, take a look at what it does to that side lot as opposed to where you already have it in the back.
Right.
So again, if it takes a, I don't care which way you go, if it gets this mess out of here, but I think you should give it some consideration. I think, uh, I think long-term you'll be up here, but it's your call, either way.
I mean, I have no problem, uh, to do either way or another way, so it's, I mean, I don't mind if you guys want to get down there and see both of us in the same terms and I have my, uh, either my engineer or my architect to come up and see it and let's see what we're thinking about and how we're gonna think to do it. Uh, it will make more sense for us.
I see it, I know, I know.
No, no, so, no, the one we proposed, either the, uh, A one or A two, going from Carson or going from, uh, uh, parallel to the parking lot, which is now. I mean, I have no problem, if we can meet, we can meet and, uh, let's see.
Gets out of the intersection, I don't care either.
I think that the problem is going to be that if you spend the money and it doesn't address the problem, you know, it doesn't address the issue with traffic on.
That's what I meant, right.
That you're looking at another investment, and so that's, that's why, you know, Mr. Houston said, you know, maybe it's just an insurance policy, but, you know, hiring the traffic engineer to do the study. Because you're probably correct, if you move the menu board, you know, I think you're gonna address the problem, in my opinion. Cause I think people are only gonna wait so long anyway for, you know, like I said previously, you know, they, I mean, they love their Dunkin' Donuts, but they're only gonna wait so long, you know, uh, so, um. So I, you know, which, which your timetable, I mean, you, you.
We don't have any timetable, I mean, it took us a little, excuse me for that, it took us a little bit longer to come up and, uh, by the last time we were here. I know, uh, weather doesn't permit now to do something like that, especially, you know, we're gonna start in springtime.
In springtime, yeah.
And, um, but we like to, uh, get going to see, get a proposal, you know, from the, uh, from the side guys, what he's gonna do, if he's gonna do that side or this side. I, I know it's an expensive, but I think it isn't cheap, I know we've got some quotes, uh, and.
After we get a traffic engineering study done, who should we get that information over to?
Tom.
That's your, Tom.
Well, yeah, I can look at it, but it should come to the board.
Right, definitely, yeah.
And, and Tom can even be helpful in terms of interfacing with the engineer to make sure that, you know, you get what we as a board need, which, you know, Tom can pass that along.
In advance of the study, have your guy talk to him.
Right, that's what I mean, right, correct, yeah. So we're gonna go, for example, with the A one and, uh, and he's gonna also suggest the, uh, by Carson's, do both planes and then see which.
Two plans, and this might be what A one-one ends up being, something like that, just because of the proximity. Now, for traffic engineers, that's no problem, having that turn that close to the road, never a problem, it's done all the time, then I respect that opinion, I mean, yeah.
As I said, that's what we're here, you know, to, uh, work together and, uh, let them, uh, let the project work.
How far, how, how wide is the, um, private way?
Do you, the private way Carson's circle, you mean?
We had this conversation.
Yeah, how far is that? Yeah, how wide is it?
We knew.
I mean, it's gotta be at least two cars wide.
I think it's, I think it might be closer to three.
Right.
Yeah, one way or two ways?
No, it's two ways. Oh, it's two plus ways, yeah.
It's two plus.
I remember when I ran the road.
I looked at it, I looked at it for a while.
Because even with the trailer there, when they sell the trees, it's parked down there and there's still two cars back and forth.
We're happy with them and we, you know, we like to help them, as always, we help them, it's.
Right, I, I.
And always we help, you know, any, anybody needs something, and we help the town, schools and everything, we're first class with them, so, yeah, we don't, we like to change that stuff.
Cause then we don't have to put another lane at all, we went that route, we would just have to put signage or some type of directional.
That's right.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't know if there's any issue in terms of your use of that access, I think what I'm hearing is there's not. Now, if the day comes where there's a couple cars occasionally that back up onto that roadway, does that create a whole other legal question? Um, I don't have the experience to say.
Correct me if I'm wrong though, but I mean, a butter's owned to the center line.
Correct.
So you have, everybody up and down that street has their right, and most of it's owned by the M B T A, right to the middle.
But once again, you would move the menu board anyway, even in that solution, so that hopefully would address that, so.
Yeah, menu board can move, by the way.
Okay, we're gonna go, uh, uh, engineer and, uh, do some.
I think we're, we're close.
I'll call a traffic engineer tomorrow and then I'll.
And then we'll do something and just present to, uh, guys and collect and get it off.
See, the good news and bad news is we're not just a planning board in this particular situation because we frequent, that we, we're familiar with the issue, you know, we're more, more so than usual and we want it to be solved because we're actually gonna be, you know, we're gonna be visiting, we're gonna be.
It's not, it's not good for our business, it's not good for, you know, it doesn't.
Yeah, we're gonna be, continue to be your customers here.
Extra stuffing and, uh, you know, uh, so, uh, okay.
If you do use Carson Circle, I think another bit of advice early in the process, just have your attorney find out what that is. Is it a private way? I assume Peter's right, ninety-nine percent of the time you have the right to use it, but, you know, I, I.
But.
No, he's not saying that Peter's right ninety-nine percent. He's saying.
That's what he said.
No, he said that in a private way, ninety-nine percent of the time.
Right, and, and, and also that, but if you just look on your deed, which you can pull up on Norfolk deeds, abutted by.
Pretty sure we have the rights to that.
Right.
Well, the M B T A gave us the access on the, uh, so we can have a little, uh, uh, stairs that connects from our parking lot to the M B T A station.
Yes.
And give us the estimate there, so then.
The M B T A did?
Yes.
How, how long did that take?
Well, that was, uh, we've been in the town for almost twenty-two years now, so.
Doesn't really matter, it's, it's ninety-one, right.
They're dealing with the tea, you couldn't.
So they gave us the estimate, so we can help you, as you know, in the back, people wanna walk from our parking lot to the thing.
Right.
Yeah, we are getting estimate, so they were first class, I mean, they, no problem at all.
Well, every now and then, when it gets pretty congested there, you've probably got a few customers who are, uh, park it briefly just to go in the restaurant.
I know, so.
Yeah, get that worked out.
But they, they like also, you know, uh, try to keep it clean and everything, so people are following and things like that, so that's, that's.
Right.
All right, it's a good, it's a good business, yeah, we're, we're glad, glad to hear.
We're glad you have this problem.
Okay, thank you very much for your time and our time, and I wish you, everybody, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Together to get this done, that's for sure.
Excellent, thanks, thanks for coming, appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Why do I have two copies, is this one you listed?
I think one comes with a letter.
Yeah.
It's a sign.
Oh, I was just gonna head over there.
You stole my.
It's early, it's only quarter to ten?
Let's get out of here at ten.
Okay, um, so we have to sign Spencer Lane A and R.
What about this, uh, planting exhibit here?
Oh, oh, that, yeah.
I know that they're.
Yes.
They're coming in to meet, uh, with the Z B A tomorrow.
Oh, okay, so basically.
It's an inform, I think it's like with the chair or something.
Right.
The actual meetings later in the month, but what, um, they would like if the board is, is inclined to do so. Jeff had written a letter to the Z B A saying we basically endorsed it, but we recommend it as a mitigation measure, doing the type of planting that they're showing here. So what they're looking for, if the board is willing to do it, is a letter saying that that plan satisfactorily fulfills the board's recommendation to re-plan along the lot lines.
So, e- e- explain this to me, because the way that Mike Kaliza told me today, his understanding is, as far as I can see, this is a clear-cutting and.
Yes, it is, yep.
Okay.
So what.
Tom, maybe, maybe what I should do is just take it from the top briefly.
Okay.
So, um, we were approached by Polte Homes, uh, because they are faced with challenges of having to deal with trees that are, um, preventing them from doing the work that they need to do, um, vis-à-vis, you know, blasting, blasting in particular, because most of the lots on the Norfolk side, they have found, um, do require, have ledge and do require blasting. So they have asked if they can proceed with tree clearing ahead of lot release, um, and building permit. Now, because their project was submitted and approved before our tree clearing bylaw, technically, um, they can clear-cut.
Correct.
Correct, they can clear-cut, um, but they do need to adhere to the requirement that the cutting not proceed the lot release and building permit as it stands right now. So they came before us and said, hey, this is really creating a hardship, um, in this particular case because of the extensive ledge. And, um, at our last planning board meeting, we said that we would give them some relief in the spirit of the bylaw that the town approved at the recent special town meeting, fall town meeting. And basically what that bylaw said is that, um, that tree clearing can take place ahead of the, um, lot release and the building permit, okay, because of precisely this type of situation, that's what triggered the bylaw in the first place. And, you know, there were folks that participated in the zoning bylaw study committee to bring that about. So, um, Polte presented a tree cutting plan, um, which, um, you know, initially, you know, we, we looked at it, uh, we felt that we were acting in the spirit of the recent bylaw, and so the thinking was that that was a reasonable request, you know, that they had and, you know, before the board at our last meeting, I believe. Um, and I was asked to write a letter, uh, to the zoning, um, uh, zoning board of appeals, basically saying that the planning board does support Polte in, in getting some relief from the bylaw so that they could do, do some tree clearing ahead of the, the, um, lot release and the building permit. Um, so I did that, um, but because the tree cutting plan that they presented showed tree clearing more extensive than what our present-day bylaw would allow in terms of the rear setbacks and such, the thinking was that the zoning board of appeals may and, um, and perhaps should, um, insist that, um, trees either be maintained or planted in the rear setback, the side setbacks off the rear of the home. And so that was the essence of the letter that I had written to the, um, zoning board of appeals, which, um, resulted in Polte presenting a new tree cutting plan, which I, I just received it here this afternoon, but they, they are at least of the opinion that the modifications do preserve, either preserve the, the trees in that rear setback or, um, they're committing to replace and plant. So you've taken a closer look at it than I have, Tom, and perhaps you could explain what this is, and then Peter, anything, you know, you've heard from Mike Kaliza's, you know, chair of the zoning board of appeals, we can certainly have that conversation whether or not this addresses those concerns, but, I mean, that's basically all I know about the, you know, situation.
And, uh, the idea was to. The idea was to, as a condition of giving a release, have the relief be sort of consistent with the current bylaw. The current bylaw says you can't clear along the rear lot line and you can't clear along the side lot line from the rear facade of the house backwards. So the plan that they originally presented, they didn't clear along the rear lot lines. So that's not an issue. What they were doing was clearing the entirety of the side lot line. So the recommendation was to have, if they're gonna clear the side lot lines, which they really have to do to efficiently remove ledge, they could mitigate that by replanting the side lot lines from the rear of the house backwards, which makes it consistent with the, with the current bylaw. So this plan is the embodiment of the planning board's recommendation to the ZBA. They're sending it here just to get a nod from the planning board to say, yes, this is what we had in mind when we said as a mitigating measure, replant the side lot lines. And what they're, what they're showing, and again, the area they're replanting is that solid red area along the side lot lines. In each of those areas, they're proposing one large deciduous shade tree. It's a two and a half inch caliper. I forget the species, but it's on the plan there.
Yeah.
Uh, in addition, they're proposing to plant three fairly sizable evergreen trees, eight to 10 foot, and then two ornamental flowering trees. So that's, that's what they would put on each of the side lot lines between the rear of the house and the rear lot. So they'd clear it, but they'd mitigate it by replanting it.
And the ones where the red doesn't appear, Tom, they're of the opinion that they're not clearing trees in that.
They, they, they didn't feel it was merited to, to replant there.
Well, take, take a look at that, Tom, and like lot 10, lot 11. I mean.
It's, it's from the rear of the house.
I've given away all my plans.
Look at the rear of the house to the back. If you measure it from here back.
Yeah, those are still pretty heavily wooded.
Right, yeah.
Ten and eleven.
They brought that, brought that little stripe down there to.
So I think, in other words, let me, let me rephrase, rephrase. But, uh, they're suggesting that because there's so much in the way of undisturbed, um, treed property off the, the rear of the, the house, that even though the side is in fact going to be cleared and blasting is going to take place, what have you, that they're not, um, proposing to replant right up to the rear of the house. Correct, Tom? I mean, is that?
That, that's correct. In other words, this, this is their current thinking, their current proposal. But Mark did say on the phone, I talked to him today, that if the board wasn't satisfied with some aspect of this, you know, just mention that in the letter to the ZBA. This substantially complies, but we recommend adding planting on lots twelve, thirteen. Well, they're certainly willing to have modifications. This is their first offering. I suppose if what, if we said triple the amount of plants is something, they could have an issue with it. But this is their first cut and they're certainly willing to.
Now, this, this proposed planting, I mean, I mean, do they say like for X number of square feet, we're gonna put one deciduous tree, two evergreens and.
I think it's that clump.
No, no, that's an example, but these are all different sizes.
Isn't it?
What's that?
Isn't it that clump at every place is a red line?
Well, some of these sections are bigger than others.
I think they're proposing it's that clump wherever you see it.
Oh, and every one of those red, well, I, I think they should do it by the size of the red clump, how many trees they put in.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with you. My kind of first reaction is, is that first of all, the right sort of variety of trees?
It is not. It is not.
And second of all, is it the right quantity for every location is, cause it could really start to look silly if you kind of have that same clump reproduced, you know, all those times. It just might start to look unnatural.
You could almost be guaranteed that every single one of those clumps would have a white pine in it. And no other evergreens planted there, you know, that, that's.
Well, every clump's gonna have three evergreens.
Well.
Two ornamentals and one shade. Every clump.
But they'll all be white pine. They'll all be maples.
On, right.
You, you know, you have to be specific. It's the common tree that you see everywhere that, that. The ones that we're talking about cutting the branches off at in front of Joffre.
But what's there now?
Well, I'm sure there's a lot of white pine, but, you know, there's a lot of deciduous in there now.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's so much replicating what's there now as, um, trying to create uh, a less, uh, lawn. You know, it, it's clear, it's, they're trying to minimize what, what will look like a clear cut lot.
Right.
And by, and by putting in exactly the same thing at each site is not gonna minimize a clear cut lot.
That's my concern too.
Yeah.
It's just gonna look a little bit too staged, a little, you know.
Unimaginative.
Ticky tacky.
There are some that they're not planting anything on the back lot line.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was saying.
On like eighty-four and eighty-five. These ones down here.
With what's there already.
Where's eighty-four?
Well, they clear it to the back lot line though.
Where's eighty-four and eighty-five?
Over here. Or is that eighty-three? Oh, that's eighty-three and eighty-four.
Top two, right there.
Yeah, they're clearing right to the back.
They've got it. But they've got the red line.
In between the two.
In between, but they're supposed to not go within, is it 25 feet of the rear of the lot line or something like that?
Tell me this, under the, under the older bylaw. If they ended up basically just paying building permits for all their sites, they can clear whatever they want.
That's correct.
That's, that's.
No, no, they have to be, they have to stay within their boundary. They can't clear out to the property line. They have to.
Not once a building permit's issued, un, under the old one.
It, it's like mirror image. What they're grandfathered under, they can clear a hundred percent of the lot, but they have to wait for a building permit to do it. Under the new bylaw, you don't have to wait for the building permit, but you have these strips along the side rear lot that you.
So they can live. Either way. But they gotta decide.
How come, um.
So if it gets too expensive, they could say, you know what? I'll just pay the building permit.
How come thirty and thirty-one don't have any tree plantings?
Thirty and what?
Thirty, thirty-one is, is ledge from tip to toe.
I thought the entire street was ledge.
Yeah. Where is thirty and thirty-one?
It's inside, it's inside what was probably, what was probably the.
Yeah, and even if you look back here, Andrea.
Yeah.
They never had, it never had any plants.
Here.
I know, I know, but I'm thinking that now since they're doing ledge removal, we could ask.
But if it didn't have any to begin with, right, are you required to put it back? I mean, it almost looks like it's.
That, that is a cleared area. The, this area has no trees.
Yeah. Well, it would be called, it'd be called moving the trees that you blew out in another place and putting them there. If, you know, not, not that we should be counting stems, but they're asking, they're asking to remove a lot more trees than they have. I think we can mitigate the concerns people are saying tonight. I think we can ask for the red areas to be larger where they need to be larger. And I think we can ask that the planting detail not be replicated.
Right, a little more diverse.
Exactly the same.
Right.
That there be, you know, three different variations and that they, they be randomly mixed around.
Yeah, they have to add a few more varieties, especially to the shade trees.
Well, there's, there's variety.
No, there's maples and lindens. That, that's all they have in there. They don't have any oaks. They don't have.
Nobody likes oaks. I mean, I like oaks.
Can't go.
Nobody, nobody ever plants oaks.
Can't go, my favorite.
Um, I also didn't look at, I didn't look at this list relative to, we have a planting list in our.
Correct.
And.
They should incorporate more shade trees from our list.
And we should, if, if anybody's looking at the list, we should double check to see.
That these are on it?
That these are on it because there's some things.
But these aren't street trees. We, we, we can't be overly concerned about whether or not they're street trees because th, this is not a bad place to put birch, even though it, I had commented that it wasn't a particularly good street tree.
Right. It's a great backyard tree.
But it's a good ba, backyard tree, right.
So we could, we could modify on lots where people have commented, we can modify the size of the red zone.
Yeah, true. Like ten and eleven, the, the one that you commented on, we could tell them to enlarge the red, red zone in, in that area.
Yeah.
Between ten and, between, on the ledge area.
And ten and eleven.
I mean, I'm, I'm looking at these red areas and just to get some idea of scale and of course you can't do that directly because it's been reduced.
But, um, but, you know, just comparing it to the size of the foundation of the homes.
Uh, what are we looking at here? Like forty by sixty or forty by eighty or something like that, Tom? You think those red, those red planting zones?
That's the size of a garage right there.
The house is probably about 25 feet deep. So there, I guess would be there 30 feet, something like that, 35, somewhere in that range.
And length?
That's what I'm saying there. Probably 35 feet.
Oh, it looks a little longer than that. I was looking at the, the, I was looking at the size of what appear to be garages on the houses.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be what? About 24 by 24, right? For a garage? So I was thinking that.
This is so conceptual though, guys. I wouldn't.
But just to get order of magnitude, because we're talking about the number of trees and.
So I'm, I'm looking at that and I'm thinking, well, jeez, that's a little wider than what a garage looks like.
Maybe like.
And it's twice as long as a garage.
Actually.
Between seven and eight.
Um, you spoke of order of magnitude, uh, Jeff. The plan, the plot plan is at a scale of one to 300. The typical planting plan, scale of one to 30. So, so those, those red areas look a lot longer than the amount of area that they're gonna plant.
I agree with you.
In their own, just, just in their own symbology.
They just put a conceptual blob down there. I don't think it represents, I think, I think Andrea's right. Look at the detail plan at scale to one to 30 to get a real idea of how much space this is gonna take. Which if one inch equals 30, you're talking like, you know, 45, you know, maybe 45 feet long by, by 20 by 45 maybe.
And the, and the red blob is probably half an inch. So it's 150 feet. Really?
Yeah, I don't think the red blob is indicated. I think, I think it's a graphic symbol that they just plopped down.
So we, I think we should, um.
That's, yeah. That's why when you look at the detail, it starts to look a little scrawny. Yeah.
So the thought that I'm hearing, I guess, is that the, um, number of trees should be proportional to the size of the area being replanted. This probably looks okay for what it is, but if it gets bigger, then we add proportionally.
Right.
So we get more varieties of trees.
And, and random, randomly spread out.
More variety of, not, more variety of planting schemes.
Random one area to the other so they're not configured the same.
That's right.
Yeah. Did we say more variety of trees and also more variety of plantings as being separate from the?
What do you mean?
This is one typical planting detail and we're suggesting that there be more than one typical pla, there'd be three typical planting details.
Three, all right. Three general configurations.
Yeah. And that they, the configurations be randomly assigned.
And, uh.
I don't know if randomly assigned will give them what they need.
So you got more species, add the number of trees to be proportional to the area. Come up with more than one general configuration or a planting plan and have the approach be more random as opposed to fixed all the time.
Yeah, I think.
It's, it's not so much they can't be, it's not so much that the plan can't be random. It's that if, if the idea of having variety in the, in the planting scheme is that they wouldn't look exactly the same in every place.
So if there's an A, B, and C scheme, it could still go A, B, C, A, B, C, A, B, C.
I mean, I see what they, they've attempted to do here where there's some trees in between the, the adjacent lots. Even if it doesn't strictly comply, um, you know, they've, uh, omitted the, the, the red planting.
I, I think to decide on exactly where the red conceptual blob goes, I think we'd, I think we'd almost need to wait until they've done the clear cutting and then, you know, see what the area is that's been removed to decide, does that, you know, area actually need a red blob between it? Does it need a bigger red blob, a small? I mean, I think in concept we can say, yeah, this seems like a reasonable approach. But which ones they've omitted right now versus which ones they've included? It's a little hard to make judgment at this very conceptual level.
Except they're before the zoning board of appeals. So they, it has to be decided before they start.
And we have to give them a perform, if we gave them a performance standard of what we would like it to look like at the end. Um, I think what, I think the, I think these blobs are telling us that they're trying to have the ledge not, and Jeff just said it, so that, so that it's not straight lawn from property line to property line.
Yeah, the contiguous clearing, they've tried to break it up.
Tried to break it up. And they've only broken it up on the back line. And, um, Michelle might be suggesting that sometimes, sometimes it's not the back line that's as important as it is the, um, area between the houses.
Well, the, the reason that was focused on was that that would bring it sort of into compliance with the new bylaw.
The tree, the, the.
The new, the new bylaw says leave the trees to the rear of the house. So what they planted was new trees to the rear of the house.
Then they should look to, they should look at eighty-four and eighty-three to see if, um, those areas, uh, have the setback that they would, you, we would expect.
Along the rear lot line, I presume they do. So, uh, would, would you like to ask them to also plant that at the rear lot line?
But I think the thing you're gonna find, as you've, as you see in the sites that are already developed in these yards, is as soon as you get out of their ledge blasting area, it's a significant slope starts to happen. Like the canyon you're like now is just gonna be spread out. So I think it's, I mean, if they want any kind of usable yard in there, they're gonna have this hill coming right down into their backyard.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
I think they're very limited in their backyards right now. I wouldn't propose that we keep them overplanted because you're gonna find everyone cutting them down anyway.
To, to your point, Tom, um, whether they could modify the, you know, the, the, the cutting plan or replant to get the 25 feet, it's 25 feet, right, is the setback? So I, yeah, I mean, I think that should be mentioned. Uh, I do think, you know, the, the more I look at this, that it's, it's reasonable. I mean, they're trying to, although the density of the trees and the selection of the trees may not be so reasonable, that might be.
Right.
You know, but, uh, you know, I, I, I understand the logic that if you've got trees between the, the properties, um, even if it doesn't strictly comply, because as Peter said earlier, technically they don't need to comply, but they're looking for something. They're looking for that relief on the timing of the clearing, the tree cutting.
When people move in, they're gonna be planting their own trees between the houses and then the houses.
I mean, if you look even at some of your approved subdivisions like Canterbury, the street trees are there. They're slowly growing. But if you look, there's very few trees in between the houses.
Yeah, that's pretty, yeah, clear opening, but it's not.
But then you take it a step further off a grove where was Barelli's other little cul-de-sac up there? Perigo.
That's beautiful.
And it's grown in. It's a little older. People have put some nice trees in between there. But it's not overpopulated with trees in between the houses. And like that site, because it's surrounded by the, uh, who's that? Holmes property in the back? There's plenty of, you know, green space, at least for now.
So, I mean, Andrea pointed out lot eighty-three, lot eighty-four, uh, rear setback, um, Tom, which we just talked about. And I think lot 10 and 11, I think there's, um, an opportunity to put some trees in the side.
Yep.
Side setback there between those two parcels.
Look at sixty-nine and seventy-two and sixty-seven over by Hemmingway Place.
Nice hit.
They put the drive, is that a, is that a shared drive on sixty-nine and seventy?
No. Oh. No, oh, sixty-nine and seventy.
They don't have any drives on here, I don't think, do they?
No, they do.
No, it's, I think seventies is to the left of the house, Andrea.
Proposed impervious, yeah. And then, doesn't it look like there's white?
Yeah, in between the two.
In between six.
Yeah, it does look shared.
I could definitely.
Yeah, but it's batching pretty closely.
My personal aesthetic would be to put a, a, a red blob between sixty-nine and seventy along the, along the sideline, similar to what Jeff was doing at ten and eleven. And I think sixty-seven got a rough deal too. So I would probably put something between sixty-eight and sixty-seven.
And it's really, you know, sixty-nine isn't so much the problem, it's seventy, because if you look at the rear of the home.
Right, right.
Um, sixty-nine is further back, it's more than lot seventy.
And so I was actually, so I was thinking that the pri- that seventy needed more privacy.
Lot seventy, yeah, lot seventy. So, so between ten and eleven, lot seventy, and did you mention another one or is that?
Sixty-seven, between sixty-seven and sixty-eight.
That looks like there's a lot of green between sixty-seven and sixty-eight.
Sixty-seven is, is all ledge.
Right, but sixty-eight has.
Look at all that green.
All the, all the green between them here.
Yeah, that's.
Are you looking at sixty-six?
No, I'm saying go, I'm saying bring sixty, bring the wi- the, the woods of sixty-eight onto sixty-seven.
You gotta have the buffer.
Well, I think they need to clear sixty-seven, so that they'd be planting when they have all those trees that are gonna survive, you know, on the other side of the property line, I mean, I'm not sure that that.
You don't think it's a, you guys don't think it's necessary? That's fine.
No, I'd, I'd rather they put more trees in some of these other locations, maybe than put trees in that location at all.
That's fine.
I mean personally, but, and so now what's, what's reasonable in terms of the number of trees in these locations? If this is in fact the, the modified list?
Well, you know, it, it, it depends on what you're trying to do. I think their, um, typical planting plan is just as someone said, it's to sort of break up the lawns. It isn't screening, it's not all evergreens, it's a combination of deciduous trees, what, the shade tree will be limbed up, so it won't screen. The ornamental trees are just pretty to look at, but they don't really screen, and there's not enough ever, so I think they're just saying it's a a mix of attractive trees, it's gonna break up the lawn areas. I mean, I think that's.
That's all it is.
I think that's the approach.
And that's fine.
Reasonable to me, you know.
So it's just a question of how many of them and the density of the trees.
Yeah, I mean, the, this thing, and unfortunately, it was scaled, but assuming this is a thirty scale, this, I think Michelle tagged it, it's about forty-five feet here from the, the, uh, existing wood line to the end of this thing, so if this looks reasonable for here, we could say, you know, X trees per square foot or something.
Yeah, use that as the basis and make a proportional off of that.
If you can fig- if you can do that ratio, that's fine, because, because it's a, um, it does, it does fit the lot line to the, to the driveway line, that is, that does look like a good cluster of trees. We just assume that there's, the red blobs are different lengths.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's also, you, you, you're, you're looking at a graphic representation of a tree here.
Right.
So.
Right.
Again, if this is a thirty scale, the, the biggest of these trees is about twenty feet across or less. Yeah, you know, so the, these are fairly immature, they'd fill in more as they grew. But I mean, I think, I think the spacing's reasonable.
I would like, I would like to, um, withdraw eighty-four and eighty-three, because, um, I think Michelle is right. Whether the slope is going up or down, um, it's possible that any, anything that gets planted along the back line there could get nailed by the new landowner.
Well, I mean, the, the other issue there is, unlike most lots in the district, these lots happen to have about open space.
Right.
The rear planting area is probably a less critical area, so.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. So how do we express this, uh, density? In a way, makes sense, cause, I mean, I, I, and, and how do we get some alignment with them in terms of the size of these planting zones? Cause I think we still haven't really gotten clarity in terms of how large these planting zones are.
Well, he did, he just did his ratio, right?
Let me, I can put a draft letter together, I'll just do some scaling here. I mean, I think it's, yeah.
Maybe give you some time with it, Tom, and then come, come back to.
If you could read it, I think they're, they would prefer something tomorrow morning. Which I, I can, I mean, I think I can.
They don't have a meeting, I thought, till the twenty-ninth or something.
They don't, but they're informally meeting with someone or some members of ZBA or something tomorrow. But, you know, it's not critical.
But you know exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're gonna be there, right?
Two o'clock, okay.
Are you at that informal meeting?
It's two and a half inches.
So are you suggesting that you could potentially draft something tomorrow morning for Jeff to look at? And we could get to that by before two?
Oh, yeah.
I think that'd be fine, cause it, we've only made a handful, what, four different points or so that we need to just get into a.
Yeah, and just a question in terms of species of trees and how many.
This is forty-five feet, but then this is, this is two point six inches. From the driveway?
It's my crozotti's doing it.
To the edge of trees. It's two point six.
Oh, but they have to start at the back of the dwelling though.
See private sites in campaigns.
It has to start at the back of the dwelling.
Okay.
The bylaws says that whether we enforce that in every case is the question.
It has to start at the back of the dwelling to the property.
The planning board approves it, but if it's a private site, they don't have.
That distance is, so that.
It's determined by where the house is located.
So that's easy, that's, that's easy to do.
With the scale drawing.
Yeah, that we want, that we want a, we want an island, a cluster of trees that goes from the back of the building to the edge of the clearing.
At that density.
Each of these locations.
At that density.
And only these, because I think what we're doing is we're saying, if there's already trees.
Yeah.
In between, even if.
Yeah, even if it's irregular.
You know, the, yeah, so we're not requiring strict compliance.
Only where, only where he's blasted.
Only where the plan shows.
Yeah.
Only where the plan shows.
Only where he's indicated, plus the sites that we're recommending.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Right. From the back of the lot.
And that's how he's drawing it.
Back of the house.
Black of the house to the edge of the clearing.
At that density.
At that density.
Yep.
Oh, we can do it, we can do this.
And, and Steve doesn't want all white pine.
No, definitely not.
I, I, I agree with that, actually.
So what do you think, Tom? You up for the challenge?
Sure.
I think, um.
Okay. What do you, what do you think, Peter? Cause you, you talked to Mike Caliza.
I, I think that'll go a long way, because the way Mike's looking at it right now is, this is a clear cut, there's no way in hell. He uses words exactly. They'll run me out of town on a rail.
I think he's making a nice effort to, uh.
Right.
And, and the thing is, the irony, like you said, is that if they timed it, you know, structured the timing differently, they could clear cut it. They could clear cut it.
It's thirty lots, it's five grand a lot for a building permit.
Yeah.
Versus, versus plant the trees.
Plant the trees, have a better site, and hopefully get in at half that cost.
Yeah, what it is, is the additional cost of them having to phase it as it goes to doing it.
Yeah.
Which, in this case, because of the blasting, I understand.
I mean, and you know what, everything that we've dealt with on, on Mark Camo so far, it's been above board.
Yeah, he knows if he wants to develop more in this town, he's not gonna start going and air fighting.
Well, not only that, but I don't think it's in his nature either.
Right, I agree.
I haven't, because, because I told you.
Always been hands open.
Very low clearance. It has very low, it's a very low to the ground car.
You can drive up this.
It's completely paved.
Oh, well, now it's paved, I can.
Cheers for it.
There's so many problems we have to deal with tonight.
You have to edit that.
Are we having a meeting before, when are they meeting the ZBA?
Twenty, the twenty-nine is what?
It's the twenty-something.
He mentioned in his email.
Did he?
Today, I think the twenty-nine. Okay, so are we, we good?
We good.
Yes, alright.
Oh, next meeting.
Well, yeah, with this, with this project, we're all set?
Okay.
You mean you're gonna bring up more? I thought we were gonna be out of here in ten.
Well, that, that took a little while longer than I thought.
Hoping to be out of here for ten.
So the next meeting, uh, we've got school vacation coming up in February.
Do we?
Yeah.
In February.
I don't.
In February.
Children have school.
That's a while away.
That's a long way away.
It doesn't matter to me anyway, anyway.
It's not.
The eighteenth, the February. Yeah.
So, we wanna try to get in a meeting before, um.
Yeah, we're gonna do the special permit decision for Gumps.
I mean, the, the Tuesdays are a bit of a challenge for folks.
Do you wanna do the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth, well, yeah, it's either, yeah, that's better than the seventeenth, cause seventeenth is.
Okay, I can do the twenty-fourth.
And, and you know what, if something blows up on this, um, Fox Run thing, we could address it before the ZBA.
Yeah.
Twenty-fourth.
Okay. Same time, not sure about the place.
To be determined.
And, that might be it. Um, there is a, um, swap legislative breakfast.
Yeah, Friday.
Yeah, it's part of Friday, I can't make that.
Well, not only that, but it's this Friday.
Right.
I'm meeting with, I'm meeting with Bob Roy that morning.
You sure are.
When you were talking about, I was like, are you planning on?
Are we?
I was thinking the same thing. Is it gonna go to the breakfast?
Can we close the meeting?
Uh, well, the, the swap, I don't know if anyone is going to attend.
It's Friday.
Not going, thanks.
Um, anything else, vets?
I can't think of anything, Jeff.
Okay, uh, I guess with that, I think so.
I'll make a motion to, uh, close the meeting.
Second.
Second.
Further discussion, cut, all in favor, aye? Thank you for joining the Norfolk Planning Board. Good night, folks.
Boy, are you a nice guy.